We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, so my first announcement and plea with everybody is to speak up directly into the microphones. So when Debbie told me to speak up, it was just a test to make sure that the microphones were on. But we have gotten comments from a number of people indicating that it's difficult to hear people speaking both here in the meeting room as well as at home. So please, let's try our best to speak directly into the microphones and avoid that issue. Also, please silence your cell phones or other electronic devices while in the meeting Wearing of masks, I think because it is difficult for people to hear, I have no problem with people speaking or up at the table not wearing masks. But I think as far as others sitting in the room not speaking, it's probably a good idea to keep your masks on. Let's see, Bridget Anderson, board member, will not be able to attend tonight's meeting. And Felix Lopez will be a few minutes late, but he'll be here. And also, I think Pete Sotero will be coming, so he'll be here in a little while.
Yeah, he's running just a few minutes late.
Okay, thanks. All right, and then the one last thing I was going to mention is that the board may be considering going into a closed session at the end of tonight's meeting to seek legal advice from council. So again, that will be at the very end of the meeting, so we won't have to interrupt the normal course of the meeting. So we've got two public hearings tonight. We're starting with Healey Hyundai. This is the amended site development plan, basically a continuation of the public hearing. Applicant seeks amended site development plan approval to demolish three existing structures and to construct a new Hyundai car dealership consisting of two structures at the former Brownell Motors site located at 794 Route 52. The main facility will be a two-story structure for the car dealership consisting of 52,780 square feet. And the second structure will be a one-story structure for vehicle maintenance and vehicle prep. There are 243 proposed parking spaces on the site, and 445 cars are proposed to be stored in the R-20 zoning district. I'll skip reading the tax map parcels, but there are several of them, a couple of them in the GP's general business district, and one of them in the R-20 zoning district. This is a continuation of the public hearing. That was adjourned by the board on November 18th, 2021, December 9th, 2021, and January 13th, 2022. So we don't need a motion to continue the public hearing, and the applicant has already given probably several descriptions of the project. The applicant has submitted a traffic impact study, which is now a part of the record. And actually, so I was going to ask the applicant team, if you're able to, would you like to give a brief overview of the traffic study before we start the hearing?
We can. Mr. Andrews here, you can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Was there, did you want us to go over any changes that we've made in the plan?
Why don't we hold off until the project review to do that? But since nobody's really talked about the traffic study yet, why don't we just give a very brief overview of that?
You could probably just pull up that site distance plan. That would probably be the best at this point.
Yeah, you had, you also had a conceptual access plan that was helpful, too.
Yeah, actually, maybe we can pull that up. If we have, yeah, that second one at the bottom. Okay, so, good evening. Again, my name is Rich D'Andrea from Colliers Engineering and Design. We prepared the traffic study for the project. Just to give a brief overview of the traffic study itself, you know, we looked at three intersections along Route 52 in the vicinity of the site, McBride Drive, Millholland Drive West, and the access to the police department, recreation department that's opposite the site. We also looked at the access driveways into the development. And what we did was, we did some traffic counts during the AM and the PM on weekday peak hours and Saturday peak hours to determine what the existing traffic volumes are in the vicinity of the site. And then we made some projections of the future traffic volumes at full buildout of the project, including a background growth factor that would account for typical growth along Route 52 here. And then ultimately, we projected what the actual traffic generation of the development will be, and came up with the build condition traffic volumes, we call them, and ran analysis of all the intersections under existing, the no build conditions and build conditions to see what the impacts would be. In general, the traffic study doesn't show any significant impacts from development as far as traffic operations go. A couple of other things that we looked at were site distance, which is what the plan that we had up before, to determine what the site distance at these driveways are and confirm that there's sufficient site distance there. We based that analysis on ASHTO standards. That analysis showed that there is sufficient site distance based on the 45 mile an hour speed limit that's on the roadway. And actually, I'm sorry, 40 mile an hour speed limit, we used 45 for the analysis. It's a design criteria. And in general, like I said, there's no, the study didn't show any significant impacts. We did note that, you know, there was a review memo from the Department of Transportation that it was what was the initial requirement for the traffic study. Couple of the comments in there were actually relative to the access itself. They had noted that the one driveway was 50, the west driveway was 50 feet wide. So in order to modify that and meet with the state standards, what we're trying to do there is actually provide a different textured treatment. It's still going to be a flush treatment on either side of the driveway, so that trucks coming in to deliver cars and things like that will be able to still access the driveway freely. But that different textured treatment, which would probably be like a stamped concrete treatment, would be, would be, give you the visual effect of narrowing the driveway for passenger vehicles entering and exiting. So that is one of the changes that we made in that location. And if, I think a good way to actually kind of continue the review of this study is, if I can, go through the review that was provided by CPL of the traffic study and just kind of.
I think we're going to wait till.
There's a couple of points that I think are kind of important and maybe for the public as well.
All right, just briefly, but.
Yeah, I won't go through everything. I just, there's a couple of things that I just want to touch on. So one of the, one of the main, or one of the first comments was that we didn't study the ramps at 84. And I just want to explain why we didn't do that. So the, the project itself is a replacement of the existing Healey facility that's down on Route 52 in Beacon, right? So theoretically, any traffic that's coming from 84 is already traveling along 52 and passing this vicinity, and they're coming through those ramps already. So if we were to analyze those ramps, we would ultimately take credit for what that traffic is that's traveling through there. And in reality, the incremental increases in traffic at those locations wouldn't really, wouldn't really factor in when you compare it to the volume that's already traveling through those intersections. And then just a couple of other things that I wanted to touch on. So obviously, New York State Route 52, we've talked about as a DOT roadway. We're going to require a highway work permit from New York State DOT for the entrance modifications. And there's a couple of determinations that ultimately, that the memo touches on, that really are going to be up to DOT to make a final determination on. But I don't think really change the overall site development significantly. So one of the things that they had touched on was the potential need for additional turning lanes. You know, based on, just based on the volumes here, it's possible that a left turn lane may be required by DOT along Route 52 there. And if that's the case, we've looked at it, we believe we can accommodate that widening of the roadway to make that work. And that's something that the applicant will comply with if DOT does make that determination. All of that work would be within the existing state right-of-way, and it would be a widening for, you know, a good stretch of this roadway, but it's all available to us. And one of the other things, just to touch on real quick, was the, the location of the west driveway and its proximity to Millholland Drive. What they had, what they had brought up was whether or not the, that would cause any conflicts with left turn movements at those two locations if they were trying to turn, if somebody was trying to turn into Millholland and into the west driveway at the same time. For one, providing a left turn lane will help to alleviate some of that. And I do agree that DOT will look at that alignment of those two driveways. It's possible that we may look to move that driveway a little bit further to the west to provide a little more separation. But again, I don't think that's something that's significantly changing the overall development plan. And again, it's kind of a DOT determination that they will make as part of the highway work permit. So those are just a couple of things that I wanted to touch on, and we can discuss more during the project review.
Right. Okay, well, thank you very much for that summary. Before we start, I just wanted to get a show of hands from people in the audience to see who would like to speak to this public hearing. Okay, so there are definitely several. So I'm going to read the planning board's rules of conduct for public hearings, and this will apply to our second public hearing, which will be on hearing holdings a little bit later as well. So here they are. Speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone. Speakers are limited to no more than four minutes, and there will be a warning when there is one minute left. Speakers should provide only new or different information or commentary. Repetitive comments made previously or at prior meetings are not allowed. Speakers are encouraged to submit their comments in writing so that they can summarize their comments during the hearing. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the board, that is the particular application under review at the hearing. There will be no verbal interruption, shouting, or other outbursts, or slanderous, or obscene language. And if anyone interrupts after the chair has asked them to stop, they will be asked to leave and perhaps escorted from the room if necessary. So I'm going to ask you to raise your hands again if you'd like to speak, and when recognized, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address. Why don't we go over here first?
Good evening, Teresa Kraft. I have many concerns with this proposal before the town's planning board for dealership expansion by Healey Hyundai at the old Brownell site. This plan can potentially strip three merged properties of all trees and vegetation and store over 650 cars on-site with plans for a car prep and washing facility. With this town's and Beacon's concerns over clean and adequate water supplies, how could this overdevelopment be entered into the equation of water insecurity? Along with many newly constructed buildings planned and with traffic potentially flowing onto Old Glenham Road, down the road, this project will destroy the natural fauna and flora environment in the surrounding area near the historic Henry Kip House. Where is the historic preservation protection in play here? This was the headquarters of Baron von Steuben in 1777. General Washington and Count Pulaski visited here. This town must protect this historic property. This town must think of all these residents. I travel Old Glenham Road and Route 52 corridor daily and cringe at the thought of it looking like Route 17 Car Dealership Avenue in Paramus, New Jersey. I live on the backside of Healey and Beacon and constantly battle with the light pollution at night and obnoxious noise of car deliveries in the early hours of the morning. Please scale this down or say no.
Thank you very much. All right, who would like to be next in the back there? Yes.
Hello, my name is Stephen Powers. I live at 4 Pritchard Court up there in Fiskville Woods. I have lived in the Bronx, in Yonkers, in Dobbs Ferry, and in Albany, and now here in Fiskville, which is my home. I hope to keep it that way. Two things about me, I'll put them in context. For many years in the Bronx, I worked for Renard Piano. It was a private, it was a business. We were a Baldwin dealer. It really helped me get a career. I learned to become a tuner and technician, which was good because I was able to schedule my work in college. And I went to college, Lehman College, got a master's degree, and became a teacher. So I thank Mr. Renard for the opportunity to work in his business. I'm not, I'm certainly pro-business. It's very good for the community. It was good for the community down there. I just want to remind folks that businesses also have responsibilities to communities as well as being a good neighbor. So I become a school teacher, and I became the union rep for a while, UFT union rep. And at one of our monthly meetings, they came up with a plan to, it's called save room. There's a disruptive student in the classroom. What do you do when there's a disruptive student? They came up with a plan. He's removed from the room, or she's removed from the room. The teacher gives lesson plans. The kid's taken to another place in the school with the dean. Problem solved. You think it worked out that easily? Not at all. I can tell you from 15 years of teaching that I had classes completely disrupted because of two or three disruptive students. The ironic thing is that there was a plan in place to deal with it, but it just never made it down because plans that start up here, sometimes by the time they filter down, don't get implemented, or more importantly, aren't monitored.
Can I just ask you, are you going to get to the actual?
Absolutely, I'll tell you in a second.
I hope so.
Yeah, so there's a feedback, feed forward loop. So I'll leave it to other people to come up with the details about, these are the rules and regulations for when cars are delivered, how they're picked up. On paper, I'm worried that it'll look good, but will it actually become implemented in the same way? Let's say that you can't deliver a car till 6:30 in the morning. But if the car driver shows up from Minnesota and wants to start unloading at 5:00 in the morning, are the people down at the dealer going to say, you know, just be quiet and don't worry about it? That's what worries me. I could show you your app on Google here, the Fiskville Wood app for town. It doesn't work in Google. I'm sure that everybody wanted to implement it to work, just didn't happen that way. If you're interested, I could show you screenshots of how it doesn't work on Google. I couldn't find the meeting plan time on Google, on the website. I called the office, the phone number, no time, no explanation of the time at all. So that's what I'm just worried about, that plans that are put in place by the time they filter down don't work that well. I hope that they do work well because I'm worried that if things get bad and then the value of my house goes down, I will seek to have the tax assessment of my house assessed downward because if it seems like things are getting worse.
One minute left.
That's what I want to do. I hope I don't have to do that. Thanks.
Okay, who would like to come up next? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hello, good evening. I'm here once, my name is Jody Lynn Burka. I live at 120 Old Glenham Road. I am here once again in protest of the use of the R-20 residential property for commercial use by Healey Hyundai. It continues to amaze me and other Fiskville residents how this project has gotten this far. I keep being told by individuals in the town that we had a 60-day window from the point that Joel made his decision. 60-day window? We were never even notified. However, I did bring a copy of a letter that I got pertaining to something at the last meeting for Brownell. They sent everybody, whether they were here or not, a letter informing us what was going to be done. So 60-day window doesn't really work if you didn't even know there was something going on. I'm also being told that Joel is his own boss. Are you kidding me? So if he makes a decision which violates codes and ordinances of the town of Fiskville, oh, well, no one can stop him, and we all go along idly? This is completely outrageous. The board has an obligation.
Let me just interrupt, and I'll give you back some time, but we really don't want to have comments that are pertaining to any particular individual in terms of negative comments, so I would please ask you not to do that.
Okay. I think what he did was wrong, and that's the person who we were told made the decision. It was not a joint decision, it was a single-person decision. The board has an obligation to provide and guide growth and development to the community while ensuring public safety, interest, and welfare of the town residents as mandated by state and local bylaws and regulations. The residents of the town of Fiskville have spoken in protest here as well as submitted written petition. I am imploring the board that if you find truth in anything I've said tonight, or you too are questioning how this could have happened, and if you think it's morally or ethically unfair to our Fiskville neighbors, then please vote no. Again, I'd like to know where my letter was to inform me that a decision was made so that my 60-day window could start because every single person I spoke to who signed the petition, nobody knew, nobody got a letter, nobody knew anything. It was done under the shroud of darkness and ignorance. As long as nobody knew this was going to go through. And it's only by the grace of God that I came into a meeting back last summer and was like, wait a minute, that looks like my house on the screen. That's how I found out something was going on. Otherwise, I would have been completely ignorant to it. That's unfair. And if one person can make decisions for the whole town, something is very, very wrong. Thank you.
Who else would like to come up and speak? All right, I do not see anyone else who wants to come up. I will just mention, we did receive two documents regarding the public hearing. Both of the people who submitted those documents were here and spoke tonight, but I'll just mention them. One was a letter from Teresa Kraft dated January 14th, 2022, and the other is the petition submitted by Jody Burka. So those documents are, have been entered into the public hearing record, and they will be considered. So I'll give another few seconds if anyone else decides they would like to speak. But we should hear from our attorney and our engineer as what are your ideas in terms of whether we should close the public hearing tonight? And the other thing I was wondering is whether we should, if we're not going to close the hearing, oh, no, I'm sorry, if we are going to close the public hearing, perhaps we can leave an additional period for written comments. So that was something I was thinking about and wanted to hear from you guys on.
Well, I'll defer to council, but I do like the idea of, if the hearing were to be closed, that you allow for additional written comment if people wish to comment further. I don't know, you know, we've heard from the public several times now, and we, it seems like the same items are being repeated, so I'm not sure if we'll get additional comments beyond what we've heard already. But again, I think I would defer to council on whether or not it's wise to close the hearing or keep it open.
Yeah, there's no hard and fast rule in connection with this. I do note, you know, that there was amended plans that were submitted, which were fairly minor in terms of the amendments, but the traffic impact study was submitted by Colliers, and it's under review. I do believe that you have comments from CPL in connection with that, that's recommending some additional analysis that be undertaken. If you keep the public hearing open, then you give the public at least the ability to comment on the, any additional traffic analysis that's done in connection with concerns regarding traffic. But it, in terms of, you know, hearing from the public, as John had mentioned, you know, reiterations of existing concerns, I think it's been well noted what the concerns are in connection with the comments that have been made so far.
Yes, and I was going to ask, just for the applicant's feedback on that question, on those questions.
Yeah, sorry. Actually, forgot I was wearing it. Good evening, everyone. Neil Alexander, partner, Cuddy and Fader, I'm half of the applicant. I mean, I think both of your consultants summarized it well in the sense of saying that there were no new comments tonight during the third public hearing. There actually were no new comments really during the second public hearing. The open issues per se relative to the traffic study are actually solely within the domain of DOT. And as you heard our consultant testify tonight, that should DOT decide to go a certain way, it's all going to occur within the right-of-way anyhow. So I don't think there's anything left for the public to comment on that they haven't already commented on, and that most of the people, or at least one of the people who spoke, has been speaking to you since the summer when they became aware of the project. So there's been a long lead time of awareness of the issues, and they've been derivative. And your current attorney and your prior attorney has spoken to you about those issues, as well as your building inspector back on, I think it was June 23rd. So, I mean, I think we're, there can always be a foundation for a reason to keep going, right? But I think what's really important to recognize is this is an application that was, excuse me, this was an application that held its pre-application meeting back in May, and it's a commercial site plan. And we got Indiana bat because we live where we live. How long for lead time does an applicant have to get out ahead of the curve in order to get through a process in a timely and fair fashion with the Indiana bat? I mean, they started really right after cutting period closed the last time, and now we're running up against cutting period again. So, and I think we've assembled a team that knew what they were doing. Yes, we did ask for an adjournment one month, but that was the month while we were doing the traffic study that we got flip-flopped on. So I would appeal to your sense of continuing to move along, and as we talked about at the last meeting, we're also trying to hold on to all the gives that we were able to get out of Ha'unda. And as you, Chairman, had sort of intimated at the last meeting, we were on a certain progression, and we would be very appreciative if we could sort of stay on that progression, particularly since there was no new commenting tonight, and the traffic issues are well within the ambit of DOT, but I may not have said that correctly.
No, I just want to add one thing.
Yep, come on up to the mic.
So when I was speaking before, I mentioned how we do have the comment from CPL, and they did ask for analysis of the ramps at 84. And, you know, like I said, this is a, we're moving a store down the road two miles, the traffic that is coming through those ramps is already on the road coming through those ramps. And it's not going to be really new to those intersections. Could we provide an analysis of those intersections? Sure, we could. But ultimately, those intersections are also under the Department of Transportation's purview. But ultimately, those intersections are also under the Department of Transportation's purview as well. So if anything was to show an impact to that location, it would really be up to the Department of Transportation anyway. So I don't think that the, you know, holding the public hearing open potentially for that analysis really changes things because I could provide that analysis to DOT and then they could make a further determination if that's what we wanted to do. But to me, that's part of the highway work permit as well if we wanted to, if we provided that analysis, so.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to turn to the planning board members and see how you feel about closing the public hearing. That's where we are right now. So again, we could close the hearing tonight. Hold on, please. I'll let you speak in a minute, but just so I can explain this, we can close the hearing tonight. We can also close the hearing tonight and allow some additional period of time, say until close of business next Friday, February eighteenth. So in effect, the in-person public hearing would be closed, but we would allow those additional, that additional period for comments to be submitted. Or we could hold the hearing open. Personally, I don't see any particular reasons to hold the hearing open another month, but I wanted to get the planning board's input.
I support closing the public hearing tonight. I think the reason we held it open in my understanding was for the traffic study. We have that traffic study. It was presented to us. So I would support closing the public hearing. If the board wants to leave a one week period for written comment, I'd be fine with that, but as long as those comments pertain to the traffic study, I agree a lot of the comments, although I understand where the public is coming from, they have been already presented to us. So that would be my stance.
I agree a hundred percent with Anthony. I understand that the public has a lot to say about it, but we've heard, I think we've heard their concerns right now. If there's anything new, especially on the traffic study, I think would be important. So I would like to keep it open for that, actually just for written comment, but close the public hearing today.
Gentlemen, I think we've heard what we're going to hear with respect to the project. And I think that closing the hearing tonight is probably the best way to keep progress going. But I would be in agreement as well to keeping it open for a few additional days, just for some written comments.
Yeah, I do agree with closing the hearing and keeping it open for the written comments a week or so. Yeah, I agree with that.
This is basically, yeah, this can be redundant on what they're saying here at night, but written.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a consensus. So could we get somebody to make a motion to close the public hearing tonight and to allow written comments to be submitted to the planning office until the close of business on Friday, February eighteen, 2022?
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I know the lady had her hand up.
Oh, yeah.
If we could hear from her, please.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Felix. Yep, come on up.
Thank you for recognizing me. My name is Linda Burka, and I just want to say, that's all well and good, we're doing a traffic impact study. We are on the verge of basically coming out of a pandemic. I can list several people who are still working from home. A lot of people are going into the office one day a week. So I don't think right now the traffic is as busy as it typically is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, sorry about that. Now, could we have a motion to close the public hearing and allow written comments to be submitted to the planning office until the close of business on Friday, February eighteen, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Felix moved it. Suzanne, the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion to close the public hearing passes six to nothing. And discussion of this application will continue in just a little bit later in the meeting under project reviews. So thank you very much for coming to speak about the project. The next public hearing we have is Herring Holdings LLC special use permit and site development plan. Applicant seeks approval to construct a fifteen thousand square foot prefabricated metal storage building for garage and contractor commercial use on the eastern portion of the front of the lot. In addition, the lot will be used for the temporary storage of portable toilets that are continuously moved to off-site locations. Other improvements to the site include driveways, parking areas, a gravel storage area, utilities, et cetera, normally associated with the development of a commercial site. The site will be served by an additional new private onsite sewage disposal system. The proposal involves a disturbance of two point one acres, of which zero point six three acres will be impervious, with the remaining one point four seven acres of pervious area consisting of lawn and landscaped area and existing vegetation. The parcel for this proposal is located at one forty-six Old Route Nine, consists of five point nine four acres and is in the general business zone and our fifteen zoning districts. So first off, would someone like to make a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Anthony moves it. Would there be a second?
Second.
Sounded like Suzanne got that one.
She got it.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to nothing. All right, so before we ask people to come up and before we ask the applicant to give a brief overview of the proposal, I just wanted to make it clear that this public hearing is on the final site development plan and it's an opportunity for the public to make new comments on the final site plan documents as submitted, not to revisit the environmental issues and preliminary plan details that were the subject of previous hearings back in September and October of 2020. And just a reminder, preliminary approval was granted by this board on March eleventh, 2021. So, welcome Larry and glad to have you here again. If you could give us just a very quick overview of the current status of the final site development plans?
Okay, you've pretty much given an overview, so I think I'll skip that of the project. Maybe what I will just say is what we said at the last meeting is that we're here for final approval. The project was granted preliminary approval. The changes to the project, the status of the project since preliminary approval has been addressing some housekeeping items. We have health department approval in place. There's been agreements put in place for easements and monitoring agreements as suggested and they were, those particular agreements were really the primary issue at preliminary approval, which moved us to consider going the route preliminary and final. So there really has been no substantive changes to the project. Again, just matters of completions of outstanding items. And unless there's something that the board would like me to speak of, if there's anything that they're aware of that they would like me to address.
I think I'd just like to make it clear, there are no two D changes to the plan that you would be willing to speak of ahead of public comment.
Say that again now?
Are there any changes to the plan, you know, the two D plans that have been presented, you know, geometry changes to pavement, anything of that sort that would warrant any public comment?
Now you're testing my memory. There could have been some very insignificant pavement changes. I mean, I- Oh, the image is-
It's reversed.
Okay, it's a mirror image of what's actually proposed. Okay. Okay. And, you know, Anthony, I'm not sure. I don't want to say that there's absolutely been no changes, but I mean, we may-
I'm just trying to drill down to that, so-
Yeah.
To prime potential commenters of what-
If somebody has a comment on something that they noticed in the plan, I'll address that, but they had, they, you know, if there was any changes, they were minor tweaks to accommodate health department comments, you know, maybe a separation from a pipe was required to be adjusted a bit. But again, nothing project altering. So, thank you though for that.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we go ahead? I've already read the rules of conduct for public hearings, so I won't read them again. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak and when recognized, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address. So, yes. I can just take them and pass, I can just pass them down, so you don't-
Mr. Chairman, if she's going to show pictures, I'm going to have to make sure Pete can pick them up on the camera.
Okay.
I wasn't aware. I don't know yet. You have to give me one second, please.
Why don't you hold on one second? We'll give you your full four minutes when Debbie comes back in. Well, let me see when Debbie comes in if she's able to pick it up. Is that going to work? Okay, that should be fine.
You can only do one at a time, unfortunately. You can't pick them up wide angle. Sorry about that.
In Oak Mallie, one forty-two Old Route Nine. The private road, Helen Court, AKA Herring Way, is to be our residential easement. Isn't that correct? Everybody on the board knows that. The private road, Helen Court, AKA Herring Way, is also to be considered our GB buffer zone. Isn't that correct? The description of the easement to be granted is described in meets and bounds and that it is twenty-three feet wide and the length has been, was left blank on the paper that I signed. There's supposed to be an Exhibit C and we had never got a clear Exhibit C that shows the exact road we are to be driving on. We never received that. And the actual eas, we need to have a copy of that C if the easement is to be officially filed. We do not want this easement to be granted, left open to future interpretation as a previous easement granted to us by the previous town board and Headstone Holdings in nine thirteen, two thousand and six. And that was also filed by the county clerk. The stockade fence on the property line is to be removed according to the license agreement signed by Sharon Herring, CEO of Herring Sanitation LLC. In regard to the previous public hearing and receipt of a special use permit in the GB zone of Herring Holdings LLC was to provide screening and landscaping. When the stockade fence on our property line is to be removed, we would appreciate some screening for us. Nothing has ever been shown on their, on their, their final plan for the plant. There's nothing, there's nothing, anything near our line, any kind of buffer whatsoever.
I think we probably needed to speak a little more directly into the microphone.
Okay. All right. All right. So when, we would appreciate some screening of evergreen or deciduous trees to be incorporated into the site plan on or near our property line. It would help to buffer the noise, the dust, and give us some residential privacy and help control storm water, snow and spring thaw. It has been stated at previous public hearings that they have witnessed no storm water runoff flowing down Helen Court. Having lived at one forty-two Old Route Nine almost thirty years, I beg to differ. I have also witnessed large amounts of water flowing down Helen Court from Old Route Nine during storms, including major storms like Ida and Christmas of 2020. That was within a year. We asked for some, before the construction of the fifteen thousand square foot high, thirty foot high building, there might be enough space to put a simple drainage channel along where the building is over here and the road to be driven on. That would prevent excess storm water and snow melt from flowing down the road, being pushed away from the building, and then the water flowing towards our home. You can obviously see, you can obviously see, this was Ida, that a channel of water actually opened up. It was, it was streaming so heavily. And my husband, you can see him here filling it in. And that went on for days.
One minute, one minute left, okay?
Okay, you can see here, this was Christmas of 2020. And it, and you can obviously see the water flowing right into my driveway from the road. And that went on for many days. And if you look at the pictures, it goes to twelve twenty-seven from twelve twenty-five, different times. So this happens all the time. And with the removal of the trees, it's gotten worse and I don't know what's going to happen with the, with the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have possibly be able to speak about something later?
Well, we have time limits on-
It's just another short one. It's in there also.
Well, why don't we see if anyone else wants to speak and then we'll, we'll make a decision later. Who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Teresa Kraft. I don't think we, the people, should be told what to say and what not to say and when to say it. Lot of us have been standing here for almost seven years before this planning board, speaking out against this project. Many have been forced into silence and many of you board members were not even at this table. Putting the fifteen thousand square foot building on the front side of this property does not guarantee protection to the backside of this property from commercial development use by the applicant, an area that they will be, that will be susceptible to groundwater runoff into the tributary. And now tonight, we're seeing this flipping the building so that the entry truck doors are in the back even closer to that tributary. No matter how this proposal is whitewashed, it still smells. There's no getting around the facts that porta potty businesses are dirty, dirtier than we are led to believe. This proposal doesn't belong on land that borders the Fishkill Creek, one of Dutchess County's most significant tributaries flowing into the Hudson River. Chemicals used in standard portable toilets cannot completely disinfect human waste and toxins. These chemicals are highly toxic to humans and wildlife. Truck oils and gas runoff will follow towards the tributary. Please refer to the records, in your records, in the notice of intent mentioning protection of the Fishkill Creek. Now we see one of the applicants wants to become a member of the town's own zoning board. Crazy. I urge this planning board to not approve a special use permit or site development plan for the Herring's Holding project and protect the environment and the residents. And I'll come back here next year and the year after. Don't do it.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Yes?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Tanyan Ball and I live on fifty-seven Sunrise Hill Road. And my property borders the rear of the Herring property. So I'm not a politician, I'm not a business owner. I haven't got a powerful lawyer or engineer to fight my corner, but I am a resident of Fishkill since two thousand and twelve and that's all. But like every other resident in this lovely town, I do hope to live my life in peace and safety, that's all. So when five- So when five years ago, the O'Mallies approached me to tell me about a septic and sanitation company that wanted to operate their business right next door to them, and incidentally at the rear of my property, I wasn't worried at all. I thought, this is surely a reasonable town where no elected officials would allow such a business to operate so close to people's homes. After all, we have well water here, and, in our properties, we drink the water from the ground, and it would be really crazy to allow a company to have a fleet of septic tank trucks and store hundreds of porta potties right there. I thought there are probably regulations that will protect residents with well water from such things, right? I also naively thought to myself, when the people who are proposing this location for their business learn that people live right next door to it, and that everyone in this location is on well water, and that the noise from their fleet of tanks and trucks going in and out would impact the peace of the neighbors, surely they'll withdraw their application and find another site, something like an industrial site where they can happily operate and make as much noise as they like without disturbing the peace of neighbors and avoiding the risk of spillage and health hazards to our well water. Seven years later, here we are. The Herring's have done everything in their power to get permission to operate on this site. The O'Mallies, you just heard Nanette O'Malley speaking, her house is just meters from this, which is just part of the proposal. The O'Mallies have attended over 100 meetings since then to explain and describe the impact of living next to hundreds of porta potties being stored, a fleet of tanks and septic trucks going in and out, but seemingly to no avail. They've lived in their home for over 30 years and are really, really peaceful and good people. And they've spent a lot of time and energy trying to speak up for their right to continue to live in a peaceful home, their home, and to know that their well water is safe and just also to continue to have access to a driveway they've used with permission for the past 30 years. And to me, it's just very sad what they've been through. So I was wrong on two counts. First, I was wrong when I thought that there would surely be regulations that would protect residents from industrial-type operations on a general business site. And second, I was wrong when I thought the applicants would do the right thing and allow residents to continue to live their lives in peace, when they truly understood the impact their business plans would have on neighbors. What I didn't consider was that the business owners don't live at this location, so it seems they're just fine operating near other people's homes and wells. Their goal is to get this plan approved, period. So my understanding is that the special permit to operate this business hauling and dealing with human feces next to people's homes. Thank you. Has been granted, I don't know whether I've understood that correctly, but. So lawyers and engineers have been working feverishly to push this across the finish line. And what do the residents have to look forward to? A devalued property, I mean, who would choose to buy a home next to a large sanitation company? The aroma of human excrement drifting through the air while they barbecue? The roar of heavy vehicles coming and going just feet from their home? And the shadow of a 15,000 square foot warehouse that's going to be built just meters away from the O'Mallies' bedroom window? So as I have, I did have more to say, but as there's limited time, I'm just going to point out that I have a question mark as to whether adequate notice has been given for this public hearing to all the interested parties. The house to the rear of the O'Mallies, previously owned by Mr. Goodwin, is now the property of Wells Fargo Bank. So the house had long-term renters in it until the septic failed, septic which is located on the Herring property. So the house became unusable. So the notice of public hearing shows Mr. Goodwin was notified of this hearing. And so my question is, was Wells Fargo Bank, the new owners, notified of this public hearing? Because, as you know, there is an agreement to, which was written December 30th, 2020, that the well testing and foundation monitoring of the Goodwin and the O'Malley properties was going to be done as part of the, the process before any blasting of rock or rock removal was going to be done. Because this building is on quite a, a sort of rocky outcrop.
So I've let you go over the four minutes.
Okay, thank you. So I just, I would hope that that gets addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up to the podium to speak? Yes, right here.
Good evening, board members. My name is Maureen Mans, and I live in, on Carrie Road in Fishkill. I didn't actually plan to speak tonight, I've come before this board and several others, but for this case about six different times already, and I've kind of had the feeling like, what else can I say? What else hasn't been said? But I have to, I can't sit here and not say something. I first met the O'Mallies here and heard their, I, I was here for a totally different matter. I heard their case and I recognized their plight because my family, my parents were subjected some, to something pretty similar, I think in the late 70s or 80s. And, little different, but very similar. And in the court, I didn't know the O'Mallies at all, and I've had the pleasure to get to know them. But I have been to two of the site visits for the Herring project, and I have witnessed for six years now, the voluminous encyclopedic, encyclopedic research that the O'Mallies have been subjected to doing, begging you, with incredible valid reasons to turn this down, to shut this down. They talked about air pollution, having, being, they're in the danger of being smelling this disgusting stuff that's, that's full of bacteria. Their vital water supply being polluted, soil pollution. I've heard about flora and the fauna and bats and turtles. And what they really haven't gotten up, that I haven't heard, and I've been listening, is begging for themselves. And I'm going to ask for them, if we can worry about all of the environmental, which I think is 100,000% valid and important, what about these two people who, 30 years ago, in 1992, when they were 30 years younger and starting out, bought this house on this quiet road next to a quiet little pet cemetery? And, and now, 30 years later, they have to worry about this monstrosity coming next to them? I'm just going to ask you tonight, if you are going to be a zero? Or are you going to have the strength, the fortitude, and the ethics to be a hero? Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this matter? Yes, Mr. O'Malley, come on up.
Good evening, Russ O'Malley, 142 Old Route 9. I just have, I believe my questions, concerns are told to be directly answered by the planning board itself, possibly during the review, possibly at another date. I just have these questions, packets if you would, just the questions.
Okay.
Now that, now that all of this, this to be rock hammering, to be conducted, to remove all the outcropping and bedrock, is the question, is there going to be a limit as to how many days or even weeks it will take to? As far as neighborly concerns and respect, because in fact, there are a number of nearby homes, are there going to be time limits to the daily hammering and construction, like eight to four? Residents are coming home from work and would like to relax, to have dinner and some peace, that's only fair. We are going, we are going to have our cherished weekends, Saturday and Sunday, of full day peace, right? Five days a week of rock hammering and construction, eight to four is more than enough satisfactory, productive time, and certainly more than enough noise, vibration, and dust all the nearby homes respectfully have to be subjected to. It's only fair, right? Just some points on the site plan packet. On the site plan, plan map, C1, it states that existing fence relocated, not gone. Then where is it exactly relocated? Map C1 also states the existing driveway to be removed. Map C2 continues to show the fence on the property line, not removed, not relocated, and still across our driveway. Map C3 continues to show the fence on the property line, not relocated, not removed, and still across our driveway. Map C4, fence is still on property line. We have an easement agreement for our driveway ingress and regress. We have a license agreement stating the fence to be removed. We do not want any issue to be left out to future interpretation as our previously passed planning board easement agreement almost 20 years ago. These documents, descriptions, and maps are being submitted for final approvals. These maps and descriptions are all too important to, and should be presented clear and without question before submittal and acceptance for the sake of all parties involved, am I right? In regards to our well monitoring inspection that will be conducted before any ground and bedrock disruption begins, we want it to be known that our well is almost 100 years old and is less than 10 feet from our home. We would prefer, we would prefer that our well be dug up by hand, it's quite near the surface. If that's not possible, we want the monitoring specialist professionals to be responsible for digging up our well or bring someone to do the work. There is no reason to have the project's employees slash owners digging up our well. It's not a septic system, it's our all-too-important water source, am I correct? One more item. Logically, there's an order to be followed as far as the construction and progression of the, of this project as it goes forward, correct? Question, shouldn't all the septic systems, all the drainage systems, all the stormwater systems, all the pollution control systems, and the infiltration basin be in place and operational before any changes are made to the terrain due to rock hammering and bedrock removal, construction, and any possible chemicals being introduced into the ground? Into the groundwater, into the aquifer, into the adjacent wetlands, and into the Fishkill Creek? This will happen as it is officially stated in the project submitted packet. Notice of intent, packet page 634, number nine, identify the nearest surface water body or bodies to which the construction site runoff will discharge. Answer, Fishkill Creek. Thank you very much. Just one question, oh, just one other thing. If all these questions cannot be answered and resolved this evening, we would truly appreciate it if this public hearing remained open until these issues can be determined and voiced by the board during the nearest future planning board meeting, so that we can have the opportunity to seek the clarity of the whys and whens of those determinations. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
You want help?
No, I got, thank you so much. Candy Gadsden, I live in 6109 High Ridge Court in Fishkill. I'm pretty much here to, to call on the members of the planning board to, one, I guess, follow the rules and regulations in place that govern what the planning board does. My reading of all the information related to this case brings me back to just the initial sale of the, of the cemetery where this opportunity was afforded to the people who purchased the property. And then it just became a situation of discomfort for the two people, the two families that resided in the area, which is the Goodwin family and the O'Mallies. And so respectfully, the business does have the right to build there, and so there is no challenges in that area. What is the major concern before me is that if the request of Ms. Hendricks way back when, where the 2009 comprehensive plan was revised and looked at because there was some uncertainty about the fact that the land wasn't even included there, and so therefore we are here, maybe we wouldn't be here right now. And so that's no longer a possibility. So I believe that the board is acting within its rights based on what is before them. So what I see is the quality of life of Mr. and Mrs. O'Malley without the support of the Goodwin family, whose property really is no longer usable, right? It's owned by the bank. And so they are at the whim of the company. And so when you're at the whim of companies, it doesn't, it doesn't bode well sometimes for the owners, in this case, definitely not for Mr. and Mrs. O'Malley. They don't stand with a number of residents, right? They stand alone. And so if any of you, including myself, was in a position that I was the only residential property going up a big, going up against a big sanitation company, I know that based on the facts, I would lose. But I want you to consider all the things that weren't considered in you being able to consider your decisions today. And that is the fact that things weren't done right back then, and based on Ms. Hendricks' letter. And Mr. Councilmember Ray Raich was very, very clear and pertinent in his questioning of the engineer and those present at the time. And I spent many hours hovering over the video, trying to gain some understanding of how we got here, and so that becomes irrelevant. So I just want to leave you with a visual. Right, so everybody can see that, right? I just want all the dollars to be able to see this, right? So this measuring is the O'Mallies' bedroom. And so this, I'll go back here. The measurement is of where the O'Mallies' bedroom window currently is, and so that's, it's, I believe it's 17 inches away. So when you remove the fence, they may have 25 inches. There is some discrepancy on the 250 feet, we don't really know where it starts, where it ends, right? And some people don't even care because it doesn't affect them. So my question for this board right now, other than considering the quality of life for Mr. and Mrs. O'Malley, is before final approvals are given, will the 50-feet-line extension into the residential zone that is part of the Herring Sanitation Site Plan project be removed? And according to Code 150-11, number five, Article two, Article three, I'm sorry, states that we're a property that has two different zones, that the less restricted zone, GB, have more than 50% of the total parcel in order to make, in order to make use of the 50-feet-line extension into the more restricted remaining parcel residential. If this business project is to be conducted on a GB zone piece of property, and this project cannot be conducted without an infiltration basin being incorporated into this project, why is the infiltration basin being constructed on the residential zone property? So I'm asking Herring right now, I'm asking anybody who's a human to consider what you're going to do to the quality of life of two people who made the biggest investment of their life to purchase their home, and now they have to live in turmoil. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak to this matter? There, yes, in the back.
Good evening, my name is Karen Hagstrom, I'm with Steiner Diamond and Glass, we represent Herring Holdings. I would just like to briefly address a few issues that were raised this evening. The first being the easement, I just want to make clear that the easement was prepared, it's my understanding, by Katania's office and sat there for about five months and was delivered to our office. We did not make any changes to that easement, it was signed. So, nothing, if there's, there's a meets and bounds description attached to that document, so I, I just want to make sure there's no implication that something was missing or done by, by our office. Secondly, I appreciate this board limiting the scope of this hearing at, at the beginning, but I, I know you appreciate that we've heard, most of what we've heard this evening is beyond the scope of this public hearing, and I just want the board to take that into consideration. It was addressed in C. It was addressed in SEAKER and in the past prior to the special permit being granted and the preliminary approval. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to speak?
John, just briefly, I'd just like to reiterate that all the comments that were brought up tonight were all valid comments, and this board knows that. These comments were all taken very seriously through the SEAKER process. Substantial documentation was brought forth to address all of these issues, particularly the, you know, the potential hazards of contamination, which have been pretty much demonstrated as nonexistent. And relative to plans changing, no plans unless anybody's going to tell me that there's something different. The plans have not changed since the preliminary approval. They've received this board's review. They've received the town engineer's review as being satisfactory for preliminary approval with conditions. Those conditions have been addressed. And unfortunately, I don't, I have to reiterate what Mrs. Hagstrom just said, and that I don't believe that we have heard anything new here, and this was my concern when the planning board decided to hold the public hearing at the last meeting. We've heard new issues. There continues to be heartfelt opposition to this. The applicants done what they are supposed to do to address the concerns. The, this board accepted the information that was presented and made the negative declaration and granted the preliminary approval. Thank you.
Larry, could I just ask you, on Mr. O'Malley's comments that he submitted, he talked about, in particular, the fence along the property line. And I'm just wondering if you've had any comments about those questions?
You know, again, I'm wondering if what he's referring to is there is an existing conditions plan and a proposed site plan. Your town engineer has reviewed these. We've prepared them. The comments have been addressed. I'm not aware of any discrepancies, but if there is, you know...
Well, let me just say, John, if I could just go jump in a sec here.
Go ahead.
So as Mr. O'Malley was talking, I think, I think your plans were submitted before the driveway agreement was signed, I believe. So without having them here in front of me, so the fence that was there throughout, you know, the process, I think is still there because the driveway agreement at that time hadn't been signed. So when we, assuming we get to approval, one of the other conditions that we would add on to here would be that, I assume that now the driveway agreement is signed, that the, I don't know, I don't know what happens to the fence, but it's going to be moved so that, so that they can use, you know, the driveway.
So the plan reflects the agreement?
Well, I don't know. I don't know that it does.
No, no, I'm saying that the, 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 the,[924.13]
And we will.
Yeah, we're going to take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to take care of that.
All right, so then the last thing I had to say was there's a phone, a telephone line across from my driveway, which we never saw before the trees were gone, but now it's quite obvious, and that's to be relocated to fit the building and to fit the 15,000 square foot, 30-foot-high building, and we would like to know if our service is going to be interrupted, our electricity, and, you know, that's also our internet, that's also our phone, and we have, both of us have parents that are 97-year-old, and we're connected to their Life Alert lines, and that's our, you know, connected to our home. So, and what, and if, when they're removing that, I'm sorry, I would assume they're removing that before the rock is being, you know, hammered or whatever. For how, you know, how long will that take? How long would we be out of service? You know, it's kind of important to us to know that, you know?
We do have to address that. That's.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we do. That's a good point.
Yeah, that's a big thing for us.
I would think that there'd have to be a new line that would be installed first, and then they can take down the old one, all the other connections made, but.
I don't know. You know, yeah.
That's fine. That's a good comment. We'll address that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Well, you already spoke, so I don't think we want to keep this going. Is there anyone who has not spoken yet who would like to? Okay. I'm going to just mention that the board did receive two emails in regard to this public hearing, one from Joanne Shermer dated February 9, 2022, and one from Karen Edwards dated February 10, 2022. I'm not going to read those here tonight, but they have been entered into the public record. I just wanted to say, both of those emails contain comments regarding the proposed Herring sanitation use being permitted in the GB General Business Owning District as opposed to being in an industrial zone, and I wanted to remind the public that the town's building inspector, zoning administrator, made a determination early in the review process that the proposed use is permitted in the GB zone, being similar to a contractor's establishments, which are permitted in the GB zone subject to special use permit. The planning board has approved the special use permit in the preliminary resolution of approval. The concerns that have been voiced about the mixed-use aspects of the GB zone on Old Route 9 really should be addressed to the town board, as that's the board that's responsible for legislative actions in the town, which would include any kind of zoning changes. That's been discussed in the preliminary plans, and I wanted to repeat it now, just so that it's clearly understood. So, I'll ask one more time if there's anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't spoken already to this matter. And I would like to ask our attorney and engineer for a recommendation on whether to close the public hearing tonight, and perhaps also if we should allow for submission of additional written public comments. I think in my own mind, we've allowed ample comment time on this one. Being a final approval, again, there were really only several comments that were directly related to the final site development plan, which we will take up, as Pete mentions, when we do the project review. I don't personally think we're going to get a whole lot more if we extend the public hearing, either by leaving it open or by allowing more written comments, but that's my own opinion.
I agree with that from my end of things. I mean, we've gone, you know, we've gone through, you know, a lot of comments, you know, responses to, you know, comments were prepared by the applicants, and so I don't think that we would hear anything new, you know, moving ahead, because, you know, the plans are basically the same. So, that's my opinion.
Yes, to your point, Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing on the final site plan, and the board had previously evaluated and had public hearings on the preliminary plan. It had also concluded the environmental review process. I would recommend at this point that you close the public hearing.
All right. How do board members feel about closing the hearing?
I agree with counsel.
Me too. I think we've exhausted everything.
Yeah.
Getting, now that agreement on this end, too. All right. Well, in that case, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Suzanne moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Eliot seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The public hearing is closed by a vote of six to zero, and we will discuss the application later tonight under project reviews. Actually, that'll be coming up very soon. All right. Thank you very much. We will, before we do project reviews, we have a couple of other things. We have approval of minutes. Board to approve and adopt the November 18, 2021 Planning Board meeting minutes. Non-substantive corrections on the draft minutes were provided to Debbie Colonna in the planning office. Do members have any other comments or corrections on these draft minutes?
No.
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 All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the November 18, 2021 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony moves it. Eliot seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yeah.
Any abstentions? All right. That passes six to zero. All right. We have one technical matter before we get to project reviews, which is Herring Holdings LLC's special use permit site development plan. Board to review applicant's request for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary approval, and we had suggested at the last meeting that the applicant submit that request since the current resolution that's in effect will expire within a matter of a few weeks, and so in case there's any time lag in the things that have to be accomplished for final site development plan, so we'll ask Mr. Pajee to briefly explain the request, although I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yes, my understanding, the approval will expire if actual construction has not commenced, and there are some administrative items that are between us and commencement of construction, so it seems prudent and pertinent to request an extension for both of the special use permit and the preliminary site plan application at this point. We make that request tonight.
All right. Dominic, do you have any comments on legal aspects of that request?
No, it would be appropriate for the board to grant the extension at this time.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments?
No.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the request by Herring Holdings LLC for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary site development plan approval and special use permit approval, which I think will go till September 5, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony moves it. Suzanne seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes six to zero. Okay. Now, we will get to project reviews, and the first one is Herring Holdings. So you might as well stay right there, Larry. This is for Herring Holdings LLC, special use permit and site development plan. Board to review draft resolution of final approval. All right. So at the last meeting, the board authorized our consultants to prepare a draft resolution of final approval. Pete, would you like to give us a quick run-through of the?
Well, there's a couple of things. Yeah, so I think before we start that, one thing that I want to say is that, you know, there's been a lot of comments throughout this, you know, project, and, you know, they're good comments, and, you know, especially in regards to, you know, the porta-potties and potential for contamination, but we took that all into account, and as you know, there's substantial notes on the plan that pertain to the special use permit that the planning board, you know, issued, and, you know, and they have to deal with, you know, the procedures under which the site can operate, you know, like for instance, if a tanker truck comes back at night and it has sewage in it, hadn't been able, you know, to empty it, you know, the sewer plant, that any of those trucks are to be stored inside at night. We had other items on the map as to that the porta-potties come back to the site, cleaned out, that there's no, there's no waste that is left in them. So there's some, excuse me, specific notes there. There's also notes in regards to the types of chemicals that are used to clean, and when I say clean, we're talking about just basically wiping down, you know, the outside of the porta-potties when they come back to the site. So there's a lot of stuff that's on, you know, the plans, and the reason that it's on the plans is so that, hopefully, that there's not an issue, but if there is an issue, then, you know, the town has the right to enforce, enforce whatever, like restrictions and requirements are on, you know, the plan, and if those are not, like, followed, and it continues to be a problem, I believe the town has the right to, you know, rescind or whatever the right, you know, word is, the special use permit. So I just want to get that out there, that we did, we, and that included, you know, the planning board and the applicant, and, you know, like our office, we took a lot of time in looking at those things and making sure we had as many safeguards as we can on the plan, so that there is the enforcement ability. So I just wanted, you know, to get that out there. So, I guess a couple of things we heard, you know, like tonight, is that the, you know, the fence, anything to do with, you know, the driveway access, anything on the plan that has to be updated that would match whatever terms and conditions are in the agreements, you know, we can add that as a condition as we go, like, through. And then the other thing was, I think we should add something, maybe, you know, you can take a look at, you know, the driveway if there is.
Yeah, I was actually looking at that while you were.
You know, the grading, if there is something that, you know, you can do to, you know, divert the water down the side of the driveway.
Well, I'm trying to understand the situation that may have occurred, and if you see in this area here where I'm running the cursor.
Yeah.
It looks like there's a natural swell that kind of is directed towards the O'Malley property, and that's right where the building's going to be, so that's no longer going to, that's no longer going to exist there. You know, in that storm of 2022 where we had snow.
Ah, yeah, I remember. That was huge, yeah.
Yeah, and snow and rain, it's, there's a good chance that any, that there's not a large drainage area.
So you're saying, so you're saying that, you know, the building is going to be there, like, blocking the path that went to the driveway before?
I think it's more than that. I think that area's going to be leveled. There's going to be a drainage system in there. It's going to collect any of that stormwater that falls is now going to be directed to the drainage system.
That went there before?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, I can take a look at that, too, and you and I can talk if we need to.
Right.
So the other thing I jotted down here was the electric pole, so.
So, again, you know, you kind of touched on it. That's going to be a Central Hudson coordination issue. My understanding is that when a service is replaced, the proposed improvements are constructed before demolition of the existing service, and then there's a switchover, and then the, and then the old service is removed after there's a switch.
Okay, so let's then, on the final, on the final plans, let's put, or you're going to put, like, a note on that, like, pole that says it's the, it's the Herring's contractor or the Herring's responsibility to coordinate, you know, with Central Hudson to provide, you know, like, a new service, whatever, you know, electric, internet, whatever, like, services are provided off that pole to the O'Malleys, that that be done prior to, obviously, any, like, removal of the poles, so that they have full service, and that.
That makes sense.
And that there's no interruptions.
That makes sense. I mean, I think that happens regardless, but.
It's going to be done, but it just, for, you know, some peace of mind for them, that we can have, like, a note on the map, and, you know, if for some reason it didn't happen, then, you know, a phone call, and then the town says, hey, you're not, you know, like, abiding by the site plan, and, you know, so I'm sure it'll get done, but, you know, like, a note, just to help to provide a little comfort. Maybe that's not the right word, but.
No, not a problem. And again, referring to the fence, we're completely on board with that. My apologies for not understanding the discrepancy there, but I think you hit it right on the head, Pete and Dominic, that the plan that was submitted and not changed was prior to the agreement.
Agreed.
So, if I might, the condition, I think, is simply stated that the plans will be revised to reflect the executed agreements.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're going to put that in here.
Okay.
I'll come up with something while we're, like, reading it.
Okay.
So we hit the utility interruptions, we hit the, you know, the drive, you know, the fencing and the upgrading, and we talked about the driveway, running down the driveway. I guess the other thing that the O'Malleys had brought up is any additional, like, plantings that might be done to, I don't, without, like, looking at the plan, I don't know if that's possible to have the landscape plan.
We do. A little help here?
Oh.
You can do it, Larry, but I'll do it for you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're not going to ask me, because I don't know.
Is it part of the site plan, or is it separate?
It's, I think it's a separate plan. Number four, C4?
So while she's doing that, the other thing that I had noticed is none of the agreements that I saw that the O'Malleys signed had been dated, so there's got to be a date put on those.
There it is. That's it. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, that, well, I mean, you know, the building, the building is right there, so. I don't know. What do you mean, what do you mean?
It looks like between the building and the driveway, there really isn't much room for anything.
I mean, you're certainly not going to put evergreens in there that are going to start sprawling. They're going to, they're going to encroach the driveway very quickly.
Well, maybe we could paint, paint some trees on the building?
Yeah, we'll give you a brush.
I'm only kidding. That was actually, like, proposed one time on one of my projects way, way back. That didn't really go over too well at the planning board meeting, I have to say. Well, it doesn't really look like there's any.
With the existing fence, what is the screening?
Yeah, why don't you bring that up?
On the other side of our driveway?
You guys, right, you guys, you guys worked that out.
This is where the, that little green area is.
Yeah, I just don't think it's going to survive there.
Like, there'll be two things there, and one here. I don't know, in the front.
I mean, if we, if we show some additional landscaping before we submit it.
Why don't you get together with them offline, and then if you're going to propose something, just put it on the final.
We'll try. We can, we'll certainly try.
Okay.
It's only going to be better than, rather than us trying to do it here.
Yep.
So I think that, as far as the things that came up at the public hearing, I think that that was, that was it. John, would you like me to go through just some of the highlights of the resolution, and then?
Yeah, very summary form. I don't think.
Yes, no, no, I don't, I don't plan on reading the whole thing, so.
Actually, as we go along, I have a few corrections, so I'll just bring them up as we do it.
All right. All right, so the beginning of the resolution just talks about, you know, the history, the history of the project, the fees, the fees that were paid. On page number two, down halfway through the page, you know, the whereas is about the planning board conducted a couple of site visits, then another whereas about the planning board issued a negative deck on August the 13th, 2020, at the bottom of page two, whereas about the public hearing on preliminary site development plan special use permit, September 10th, 2020. So that was the.
Staying on page two, on the third, whereas, where it says, Town Planning Board reviewed the application for site development plan. I think we need to add the word "and" special use permit.
Okay. All right. Are you good there, John?
Yep.
Okay. So that was the public hearing for preliminary in September. Page three talks about the issues that were raised. Generally, most of the ones we heard, like, tonight, appropriateness of the proposed use, residential area, rock excavation, stormwater runoff, potential groundwater contamination, and potential impacts of off-site wetlands, pretty much generally the same as what we heard, you know, tonight. The project sponsor submitted a detailed comment response document, February 24, 2021. We reviewed it several times. There were some corrections made. Now, on the middle of page, on the whereas there, we're going to have to, Debbie will have to fill some in there, because it says, whereas the final public hearing was conducted on February the 10th, 2021, at which time, you know, blank.
Actually, it should be 2022.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one. I missed that.
I think all we need to say is at which time the public hearing was closed.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, sure.
Keep it simple?
Yes.
Okay. So Debbie will fill that in? And then, go to page, go to page four. Middle of page, whereas on March 11, 2021, the planning board adopted a resolution of preliminary approval, site development plan, special use permit approval, and now we're going to, now we're in, oh, wait a minute. What's the bottom of that page? Is that the, oh, so, okay, so the bottom of that page, we're not going to go through it, but it's basically reaffirms the conditions of the special use permit that was approved on March 11th. So that's the bottom of page four.
Just on the second line after it now therefore be resolved, I think there's a space issue between the above findings.
Yes, there is.
Just need to make a space there.
Boy, that's good. All right. Okay. All right, so page five, I think we, let me see here. So page five is be it further resolved, standards met for, let's see, this is not it. Oh, yes. Okay, so these are, these are the conditions of, like, approval that we're going to be considering. So, on page five, so be it further resolved, planning board, town official, based on above findings, have compared the form and substance of the complete application, hereby adopts this resolution of final approval, site development plan for the project known as Herring Holdings LLC, substitute compliance with the following conditions. So we typically go through these. So number one, the project sponsor submitted agreements for adjacent property well foundation monitoring. Those were submitted on January the 13th, 2022, you know, endorsed by everybody, except I did notice that the agreements were not dated, so I added here at the, at the end of that one, said agreements must be dated and recorded, and submission of such proof of recording shall be submitted to the planning board. And I think I'm going to cover the.
Fence issue?
Yeah, so why don't we add, so, so let's, let's add a sentence to that one that says the project plans will be updated, updated to reflect, to reflect the. What?
The terms of the.
Yeah, the terms, thanks. The terms of the, of the driveway, well, of the agreements. I guess we can just put it that way.
Yes.
Agreements, including but not limited to the fence, or just go leave it and just update it to reflect the terms of the agreements?
I would leave it broad.
Okay, just leave it broad, and then we'll make sure that the.
Karen's got a comment relative to the date?
I was just going to say, when they were notarized, is when they should be dated.
Okay.
Date of the notary.
All right, but there just wasn't, on the ones that I saw, there just wasn't, like, a date that was filled in.
At the top, there's blanks.
At the top, there's no, like, date on the first page.
Right, so that should be when they were notarized.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can just fill it in.
She's just making the point that the date, the date that's put in should be the same as the date of the notary.
Right.
That's on there.
Okay. I agree with that.
Okay.
All right, number two, owner's consent note signed and dated by the owner. That's pretty much a standard one. Three, the project sponsor shall obtain coverage under the New York State DEC Speedy's general permit. There was an MS4 form, MS4 acceptance form that was submitted. So I typically coordinate getting the supervisor to, because the supervisor is the town stormwater management officer, so I send him, like, a note saying, hey, we reviewed this, it's okay, it's dated, you know, whatever, and then he signs it, and then you take it and submit.
You get it back to us. You submit, yes.
So that's in here, so that's, so that's number three. Project sponsor in regards to executing stormwater management facilities agreement, I don't remember if they were. I know you submitted them, I just don't remember if they were, but we're just going to leave it that they have to be executed.
Yes.
If they've already been executed, fine.
Right.
So we'll just, we'll just leave that one. Number five, number five is just, I'm not going to go through all that. That's just our standard landscaping condition, which breaks down, you know, the species that should be, that should be part of, part of the planting, so, and then about that the planning board, like, reserves the right to revisit, revisit the landscaping in the future for a period of one year. So that's five. Number six, kind of generally the same landscaping, like, in screening. There is, there is a requirement in 6A for posting of a bond, the amount of $20,000, to ensure the landscaping and the fencing, because it included. to ensure the landscaping and the fencing, because it included, you know, like both in the estimate for, there's some fencing on the other side where the porta-potties are going to be. And then.
Was somewhere in number six be the appropriate place to put something about the additional planting and screening?
That's a good one, yep.
Do we want to maybe make a new C there, or just?
Yeah, let's just do that, let's just make, let's just, let's just make a new C. So B is just that, again, like standard that, you know, all this, all this has to be in and done prior to the certificate of occupancy, and we have the bond like to cover that. So we're going to add C, so final, let's just say final landscape plan. Landscape plan. May be, may be updated.
About to be updated with.
Pending, like, pending, pending agreement with O'Malley on any additional plantings?
Why don't we just, why don't we just say that additional landscaping will be provided as appropriate along the O'Malley property line?
Additional landscaping as appropriate.
Will be provided along the O'Malley property line.
Along O'Malley property line.
And we'll, we'll make sure that that's coordinated with the O'Malleys.
Okay, yeah, you can just, you're just going to do that on your own?
Yep.
And will be shown on the final.
Right. Yeah, so I said, final landscape plan.
Yep.
May be updated pending additional. Can't even, I can't even read my own hand right. Okay.
You got it?
Okay, you're, you got it, you got it. You got me covered, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Number seven is just like a standard, standard condition as far as exterior, you know, like lighting, you know, to be shielded, and I think there's even a note on the map to that effect. So number eight is the, eight is in regards to the, wait a minute, have execute, the applicant and adjacent homeowners, Mr. and Mrs. O'Malley, have executed, we don't, we want to take out the words of future. Right, have executed a driveway access maintenance agreement, take out the word future?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. Concerning their use of Helen Court. Agreement must be dated and recorded. Oh, so I also showed, or I also asked Larry that, is there like meets and bounds to this, I'm sorry, to the easement for the, for the driveway too?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could show the easement on the map, and then just like reference it, that there's a driveway access, access agreement for O'Malley filed in Dutch County, like clerk's office, just like to reference it, show the, show the easement on the map where it, okay.
Deb, would you mind just reading back the, the comment about, just to make sure I have an understanding of the, the condition for the landscaping, the additional landscaping along the O'Malley property line?
Additional landscaping shall be provided as appropriate, and then you're going to revise the points to reflect that.
Right.
And property on the O'Malleys.
Very good.
Okay?
Yep. Okay, so, so number.
Do you want to, do you want to, do you want to make that subject to Pete's approval?
No.
Do you want to make it, no, okay.
I don't know, I mean, maybe John, I mean, John's.
Mr. Cantor will work on the language.
He's, you know, the landscape guy.
Okay.
Okay, but it's not conditioned upon the O'Malleys' approval, right?
Yeah, I don't think we want to make anything a condition of a neighbor's approval.
We didn't put that in there.
Yeah, that would, that could get sticky.
We didn't use the agreement, the word agreement.
We have every intention of coordinating that with the O'Malleys, but.
Okay, well, I'm sure you guys will come up with something, okay? Okay. So number eight, really nothing else to say there, that's about the, you know, the access agreement we covered. We covered that the plans are going to be updated to reflect the agreement, we covered that in number one, so we don't need to do anything further there under number eight.
Actually, I don't know that number one really referenced the driveway easement, did it?
I don't know, let's see, what did we say here, we said.
Talking really about the property well and.
Ah, yes, that's right, that's right, so we should say the same thing, then the project plans will be updated to reflect the terms of the agreement. Basically, we'll just, we'll just repeat the same thing we did under number one on number eight, right?
Yes. And also, I think we don't need the wording, this agreement will be subject to review and approval by this board as a condition of final approval, because it already was reviewed.
Uh, yeah, 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 that's right.
So Pete, relative to that easement on the map, we'll show the meet, with the meets and bounds, and we'll provide, we'll actually provide the description rate on the map, would that be acceptable?
Well, are the meets and bounds in the schedule? With the easement?
They should be.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think so. I'm just saying.
I mean, you can put them on the map, right?
I think that just, I think that covers what you're saying, to make sure it's properly depicted on the plan.
Yeah, that's fine. And then number like nine, just talks about the building elevations. I wasn't sure that, you know, the manufacturer's specific colors and materials were on there, but I think you said that they were, but I just left it in there, just to make sure that, you know, the manufacturer's colors and materials and all the stuff the planning board, you know, agreed upon, is on the elevation drawing, and if, and I think you were going to go ahead and list that elevation drawing on your cover sheet.
We are.
But like prepared, you know, like by others or something, so you're not like responsible for it, it's just, it's going to be part of the overall set that the chairman will sign.
Not a problem.
So that's number nine, and number, number, number 10 kind of talks about what I just said about the offered specific building details and features. And that the planning board, like, accepted them.
Yeah, if there was an issue with the building elevation detail with any.
Yeah.
Any mirror imaging or anything like that, we need, we'll need the actual one that's going to be built.
Yeah, and you're going to submit materials like board as part of the plans being signed. And that's pretty much it, and then planning board, like, approval block, like 11, 12, you're going to reimburse the town for all the, for any like costs, and then 13 is just like our standard, any changes or modifications that the applicant deems necessary during the course of, course of construction must be reviewed and approved by the planning board.
So you want to add, you want to add a condition about the electric and the communication?
Yeah, I guess so, so what's that, 14? Sorry, Dominic, you wanted to add something?
And number 12, I believe, references subdivision proposal instead of cycle.
Oh, yeah, well, we had to put something in there for you to catch, we wanted you to catch something.
It gives me an opportunity to show that I'm paying attention, so thank you.
Well, we rehearsed this before we came, didn't we?
We did.
Okay.
Who's on first?
To review of this site development plan, alright, you'll, alright, you'll figure something, okay. Got it. And then the final plat, there's no final, right, you got it, I shouldn't even ask. So number 14 would be add note on utility pole regarding Herring responsible for coordinating and relocating all existing utility services, utility services to the O'Malley residents prior to removal of pole.
Do you want to add that there would be no, no interruption of service?
Prior, prior to, prior to removal of pole to ensure no interruption of service. Good?
And then somewhere, I think we need to add that the fence will be removed, you know, at some point. It'll, it should be removed from the site plan. Right?
I think we talked about that
Yeah.
early on, right?
No, we said it on, on the plan, didn't we?
No, we said we're going to modify, we're going to modify the plans to reflect, to reflect the.
To reflect the agreement.
Right.
It doesn't, I think we should specifically say something about the fence being removed.
Okay, so you want to go back up to where you talked about the easement agreements?
Yes, that would be number eight.
Plans updated to reflect removal of, oh, what did I say here, plans reflected, updated, oh, that was something earlier I added. So I actually had here, plans updated to reflect removal of fences.
What you didn't say.
But I didn't say it, because I thought we covered it somewheres else, but.
You talked about it.
Does that work?
Say it again?
Plant, the plans will be updated to reflect removal of fences. Now, do we have a specific time when that's supposed to be done, or no? I mean, I thought, I thought that Mrs. Herring said it was going to be done as soon as they got.
Do you guys remember what? Oh, yeah, once, once.
Once the agreements are filed, okay, to reflect removal of fences, once agreements are recorded. Perfect. Well.
Thank you, Pete. We have to change the condition numbers at the bottom, but we can work on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
We added a lot of new ones.
Yeah. So I think the, you know, the rest is just, you know, standard, you know, wording about how long the approval lasts, and. Now, the one thing Larry, we added here, so as far as the, they'd already, the planning board already proved that the trees could be cut, but the stumps shouldn't be taken out until you got Speedy's coverage.
So the trees are down?
Trees are down, but as far as taking out stumps.
So no, no work's going to start until we.
Right, so I, I just put that in there.
That's fine.
Can't take out stumps until you got coverage.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually also added, and a building permit has been issued, is that something that would normally be?
Well, I mean, you're not going to start, you're not going to start like site work before you have a building, building permit, right?
What do you mean by site work?
I don't know what the, I don't know what the town's like policy is on that, so.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't really know.
I mean, the idea was to have the site stabilized after the trees were removed until any further construction starts. So I think we don't want to see a situation where for some reason the stumps are removed, the site is left basically unprotected, and once the building permit is issued, then there's a time limit for how long they have to finish construction.
So let me ask this question, there's, there's some significant preparation, site preparation before they'll actually be able to do any construction of improvements with regard to the rock removal. So rock removal, stump removal. What, what is the town going to require to, other than the site plan approval being signed, to allow them to proceed with that, does a building permit have to be issued to allow the rock removal to commence?
I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what past like policy has been.
You think so, otherwise you're talking about clearing.
You know, like, you know, like, a lot of towns don't, I mean, a lot of towns will say, maybe the town official does that, that there's no site work until you have a building, sign plans and a building permit. But I, is that?
The only other thing I know that's different is clearing and grading, but usually you don't get that until you have final site plan, so.
Okay, so whatever the town's requirements are, we will obviously adhere to. But if there's, I mean, if site plan approval covers the site work, then they would like to proceed if the building permit.
Alright, so listen, why don't we do this, why don't we just leave it, you know, the way it is, and then if it becomes an issue, I mean, we, we could, we could always make an amendment at a future like meeting if we needed to, you have some, you have some things to do on conditions.
We do.
It's going to take a little while, so you can talk to Joel, figure out what can, cannot be done, and if this needs to be changed, then I, you know, I guess we could consider a change, so.
You're pretty sure building permits required?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, then leave it, and let's, let's go.
So, and then, it's got to be changed, I mean, if it can be changed, it can be changed later, but.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Well, let me, let me see if there are any questions from our board members before we go on with any other discussion.
I do want to ask a question from Mr. Pajee. I'll wait for Larry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Larry, I'd like to see the, the back where the dump is, where, where's the infiltration basin going to be?
Can you? What was that?
Where do you need to be, Larry?
Go to the, the grading plan. There you go, there you go. Lower right corner, maybe scroll up a little bit. Yeah, Pete and I actually walked out there, there's no, you said dump, I, I would, please don't use that word, because there's no dump there.
Okay, well, there is stuff out there, that's.
That's off of this property.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where exactly the infiltration of the basin, well, it.
That's, that's this area right here?
Right, okay, and it's going to.
Infiltrate.
Infiltrate to where?
Into the ground.
Into the ground, they did percolation tests, yeah, we're not anticipating any outflow out of that basin.
No, okay, and, and it'll go into the ground, and where would it infiltrate to exactly?
Down, groundwater.
Groundwater, okay. When that's being constructed, will you be checking to make sure that there's nothing there that's maybe environmentally hazardous?
We already have. We did already.
We have?
Yeah, they excavated, one of the things, one of the things that came up early on in the process was that there was, there was concern that there was a form, a former dump there, not, not to use that word, but. So the applicant excavated, I don't know how many test pits, you know, a lot, and.
That's like a dozen.
Larry and I met at the site, and there was no evidence, I mean, I think one or two holes had a few like bricks in them or something like that, but, I mean, there wasn't anything that you would even, we would even think would be, you know, like hazardous, so. That was something, that was something that was done, and then there was, there were some things that were not even on this like property line. I think there was an old like refrigerator that may have been dumped there over the years, over the bank, but that was years and years and years ago.
And over the bank, that is not on your property?
It is not.
Over the place?
It is not.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Herring, did you have something you wanted to ask or comment on?
One of the stipulations is that we have to do well testing and foundation monitoring, can we begin on that process?
Well, that, that can't happen until you do the rock, until the rock commences, because you want to do that right before the rock removal starts.
Oh, right before?
Yeah, because that's, that's when, that's how it will determine that the rock had no impact on the well, or it did have an impact on the well.
Sorry to take your time, I should have just spoken.
That's good to clarify. Alright, Dominic, do you have any other suggestions, comments, questions?
No, nothing further, everything was captured in the resolution, the board satisfied.
Alright, thank you. Alright, well, I think we are ready for a motion to approve and adopt the direct resolution of final approval for the proposed Herring Holdings LLC site development plan as discussed and revised tonight, and boy, was it revised. And authorize the chair to sign the resolution, would someone like to move that?
So moved.
Suzanne, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion to approve, final approval is passed six to zero. All right.
We will get out of the way quick here, you have a long agenda and a lot of applicants behind me, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night, thank you for everything.
Thank you. All right, I will move along to the next project review, which is... Okay, well, I think we're gonna keep going, but why don't you-
Yes.
All right, 62 Greenwood Drive, land development permit, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on January 26, 2022. Welcome. I keep bumping into this microphone, but I have to keep it right near me. Yeah, I know. So, welcome, and, uh, it's been a while since this application has been before the board, but why don't you give us a, a brief update on where we are?
Sure. First of all, I'm Eric Robey with Hudson Land Design, here, let you know who I was since it's been so long. I think it's been about a year since we were here, and we had to go to the zoning board for a few variances, and we've been there since. We, we've worked through some of the variances, we eliminated one of the variants with a slight redesign, and we've also done some redesigning with some guidance, uh, from Pete since, uh, the previous submission, which was pulled from the agenda, so we could work through some, some things. But I think we've wound up with, uh, a design that, that fits the neighborhood a lot better now, and, uh, we've handled a lot of the technical issues during the zoning board review. So I think we've, we've handled a lot of stuff up to this point.
Um, Eric, maybe you could just talk a little bit about, 'cause one of the major things was, um, uh, the reduction in the size of the garage that was formerly, like, proposed, it's now more of, you know, a shed type, like, structure, and you also pulled it, um, significantly closer to the house, so that, you know, there was more, uh, reduction in, you know, impervious area, and you've used some porous, like, pavers up by the house and a gravel drive, maybe just wanna just run through that quick, 'cause that was a pretty, like, major change that-
Yeah.
Reduced things a lot.
So the biggest change was where the mouse pointer is, right here. That's a shed now, that used to be a detached garage slash workshop, it was two, a two-story structure. Uh, we got rid of that, pull it, it originally was also in the setback as well, that was one of the variances that we were looking for, but we, with that moved, and then in this latest revision, it turned into just a shed. So it's just a, a flat graded area, and we also added porous pavers in the flat area right outside of the garage, the garage for the house. There was also some stormwater changes, too, we added an infiltration trench down the hill, there's some dry wells, rain garden, quite a few things on the site right now.
So, so the need for one variance was eliminated, but can you explain which variances you received?
Yes, so the only two variances we received are lot width, because the lot is, is narrower than the zoning, and driveway grade, because the site is so steep, it's impossible to have a driveway meet grade. So those, those two variances are just, uh, there's no way around those with this lot.
I appreciate it, I just want that out, out loud.
And on the driveway one, uh, we, we had, uh, we, uh, well, the, the zoning board and the applicant had gotten input from both the highway superintendent and the fire department that, you know, would service, you know, the site to make sure that, you know, that they were okay with, uh, you know, the steeper, the, you know, the grade, I think it was, what, eighteen percent, nineteen percent?
I think we hit twenty.
Okay, so... So, um, you know, as Eric said, um, you know, after, um, you know, the last time, last time that they were there, uh, you know, we asked that, hey, that we, we, we tried to work off, offline to, uh, you know, get some of these mitigation, you know, measures, uh, agreed upon, so that we didn't go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So, um, you know, and we have, and so there's been a, a lot of changes to, you know, the map, um, as, as Eric said, and trying to infiltrate, um, as much, much as possible. The soils aren't, like, great, but, um, as much as we can, much as we can put into the ground, uh, you know, like, they will. And, uh, I mean, I think that the project that is shown here is more in keeping with the rest of, uh, you know, the neighborhood and the houses that are built on that particular side of the road on the hillside, so, you know, before it seemed like it was a little, it was a little, uh, you know, like, much, it was, uh, more than what some of the other houses on that side of the road had, so I think this is a much more scaled back version. So, um, I mean, I feel, I feel, like, comfortable that, you know, they have done as much, uh, as much as possible to, um, uh, you know, mitigate, you know, the stormwater, like, runoff. Look, I mean, is there gonna be some more, like, runoff from the site? Sure, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna, like, develop it, um, but, uh, again, just trying, like, to minimize, uh, the amount of water that comes down to the town road was, uh, you know, the key here, so, uh, I think they've done a pretty good job, I don't, I'm not gonna, you know, you have a lot, you have quite a few other things, uh, most of the things in my, um, uh, memo were just some minor, like, technical items, I guess the one thing I did wanna bring up, just to get your input, is there's a short, um, retaining wall, um, on the, I don't know, what's, what is that, north or?
North.
North?
Yeah.
Uh, on the north side of the house, there's a short, um, like, retaining wall that, uh, is noted to have a, a fence on it, so I asked that there be a, a general, like, detail shown for, uh, the retaining wall, it's a five and a half foot wall, so technically any walls over, over four feet have to be designed by a New York State PE, but, um, typically we would say that the, uh, like, design of the wall could be done at the same time that the building permit is, um, submitted, because, you know, each, each, like, wall manufacturer may be a little, like, different, and depending on what the contractor proposes to the owner, you know, the wall manufacturer typically has their own PEs on, on, on staff, and they would produce stamp, stamped, uh, plans, but I also said here that in the past, when we've had these, uh, on other, other cases, that the board, uh, has typically gone with a black chain link fence, so as long as the board thinks that that's, you know, like, appropriate for this site, uh, then we would ask them, you know, to show that on top of the, uh, on top of the wall, we did that on a couple others, I forget exactly which ones, but I think we, I think we went with a black, um, chain link fence. It's only needs to be, like, a four-foot fence, it's just, you know, for security, uh, for somebody not, you know, like, falling over the wall if they happen to be up there, so.
Yeah, I, I think a black chain link fence would probably be appropriate, I don't know, if other board members have other needs, or? Sounds like it should work.
So, um-
I guess, I'm just, Pete, I'm just wondering about the, um, you know, final design of the retaining wall, waiting until building permit application? You say that that's kind of typical, but, I mean, is it-
No, not here?
Is it possible that it can be, you know? Can that be provided before we actually get to the point of approving the land development permit? Um, we don't, we don't have a public hearing set yet, we're gonna-
No, we're gonna, yeah, right, right, we're gonna do that.
It could be, we usually typically see it as part of the, the building permit process, unless it's some outrageous wall that doesn't look like it can be built, then, then might have been, it would be part of the-
At the planning board approval stage, okay. Look, it's probably gonna be, uh, as I said here, it's gonna be close to, you know, the property line, so you're not gonna put any kind of, I don't think, like, a versalock with the small blocks, 'cause you gotta put, you know, the grid in, and you don't have room to put the grid, 'cause it's close to the property line. So why don't you, why don't you talk to your clients, you know, it could be just a simple, like, ready rock, you know, like, wall, and if that's what they wanna go with, I think you could just get, like, ready rock to do a quick, you know, like, design and, like, include that as part of the set.
Okay, I can look into that.
So, sorry, I must've been thinking about another town.
Yeah, I think I, I think I, for one, would be more comfortable not waiting till the building permit stage.
Okay, that's fine. So, um, other than that, if any, the planning board doesn't have any other questions, uh, I guess the last thing is, um, you know, we do need to have a, a public hearing on the land, uh, development permit application, so if you're so inclined, you could set the public hearing for, I assume it would be the March meeting.
Thanks, Pete. Any, um, comments from board members?
No, just that I appreciate the applicant's willingness to mitigate some of the, the variances by, uh, addressing the, now it's called a shed, so, much appreciated.
Um, Dominic, uh, this is in the Beacon Hills, I did it again, I'm like hitting, like, a drum on the microphone stand. This is in the Beacon Hills, um, district, which is really one of the few places that I've seen that requires a land development permit as opposed to, you know, just a building permit for building a house. But, um, there are some, uh, I'll say quirky things in the procedures within that for issuing a land development permit. I just wanna make sure if we do go ahead and consider setting a public hearing, that we're not missing, missing any of the interim steps that we need to do, and Pete, you probably would be familiar with that as well. I don't think there are, I think we can go ahead and-
Yeah, I, I don't see-
That's correct.
Yeah, I looked through, I mean, I didn't see anything that would, that there was any other, like, steps before we would have a public hearing. I mean, certain, uh, um, once we get around to considering a, a resolution, we'd have to look through the requirements to see what has to be incorporated in the resolution, and I think, I'm sure, you know, I'm sure there's probably a sample around.
I think once the public hearing is held, that begins a time clock for certain other things to happen, um, which includes things that the town engineer is supposed to provide the planning board with, I believe, so.
Okay, I'll double check that.
We wanna take a look at that and just make sure we don't miss any of the windows in there. But Dominic, do you have any other questions or comments about this?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, well, just, um, my own observation is, and this wouldn't affect the public hearing, but, um, we will need detailed landscaping plans and rain garden details before we go ahead and approve the land development permit, so that'll give some time, you know, if we do set the public hearing for March, to get those things incorporated into the plan package.
Okay, do we have a, a master plan, a landscaping master plan in there right now?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll need to, I, I think your, your memo indicated that you'll be working on, uh, preparing a final detailed landscaping plan and including, um, any additional details of the rain gardens, so-
Okay.
There's time for that, though. All right, um, so, um, what does the board think about setting a public hearing for the March 10th meeting? Sounds like we are there and ready to do it.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Okay. Would somebody like to make motion to schedule-
Just schedule the public hearing.
Schedule a public hearing on the 62 Greenwood Drive land development permit application for March 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter as possible.
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so having set the public hearing, we need to identify the location and number of signs for the advertising, the public hearing, I think in this case there's only one place for the one sign, which is at the driveway on Greenwood Drive. So I think we're in agreement on that.
Yeah, one.
All right.
Do you provide the signs?
I will get you a copy next week.
Okay.
There's a whole procedure for that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, so I think, uh, that's it for the night, unless you have any other questions of us?
Nope, that was it. Thank you, see you next month.
All right, thank you.
All right, good night, everybody, I'll see you next month.
Thank you, Pete. Good seeing you.
See you, Dominic.
Pete, jury of the state.
Good to see you.
There's no football tonight, I don't think.
No, there's no football tonight, but, uh, I'll pass, I think, the Olympic, oh, yeah, you're right, the Olympics are on.
Thanks, John. Curling, yeah, I got it backwards. See you next month.
All right, the next item under project reviews is Healy Hyundai amended site development plan, board to review submissions made by the applicant's representative on December 29, 2021, and January 26, 2022. So again, welcome, Mr. Day.
How are you?
Please give us any amount of update on the plan submission that you would like. We already talked a little bit about the traffic, um, impact analysis, so I don't know that we need to get into that too much more right now.
The real substantive changes that we made, I think we were at the request of, of the board at the last meeting, uh, we modified these trees that Ken is so diligently located now. Uh, those are all evergreens, um, there are white spruce and something else, but they're all evergreen trees. They're, they will be pretty sizable, I believe, uh, the size they're shown on the plan is, is, uh, not maturity, but, uh, close, so as you can see, that's gonna be pretty filled in. We also modified, uh, in the rear lot, we added landscaping to the east and west side of that parcel, uh, to offer shade or buffering to the neighbors. Also, we have, as you can see, we've, we've done some extensive landscaping on Old Gunnam Road. Uh, one of our prior, uh, submissions, we had those, that landscaping up behind the fence. Our landscape architect has pointed out that they would probably be, act as better screening if we did relocate those back up behind the fence. I'm leaving it, I'm throwing it out to the board to see what you think. He brought up a good point, because the elevation, adding those trees there will do little to buffer, uh, what's up there. Now, there is a vegetative buffer there, which you all know, but these would be, um, obviously new trees, denser growth, they might be better suited up behind-
Excuse me, Mark. Hold that microphone.
Oh, sorry. I think they'd be better, um, up by the fence line, but I'll leave it to the board.
So where's the fence line, again?
The fence line is right behind the last row of cars, uh, that's the fence line, as Ken has pointed out.
So, Mark, you're gonna put the veget, you're gonna put them where exactly?
We, we'd like to move that, that row of landscaping that's on Old Gunnam Road, we'd like to move it up in that area.
That's, that's great, 'cause, uh, I went out to the site the other day with, uh, actually Councilman Isfam and I were out there, and that's what we were thinking also.
Okay.
Uh, that, that would be much better, would screen it much, much better, and even maybe help with the, uh, to mitigate some of the lighting.
Okay.
I thought that, that's what, and then even, I, I'm glad you went with the evergreens, 'cause we looked at that also, if we could, now, how, you have, what, six there right now?
Yeah, we have, uh, six, six up by the front.
That's up on the, that's up on Route 22, yeah. I think there are many more evergreens down in this area.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about up there. Now, how far down, because we, when we looked, we've, we were thinking maybe we can, maybe put a few more, a little bit further out?
To the, to the east?
Yes.
You're saying? I mean, we could, we're in that buffer, we're in the wetland buffer, so-
I think that would-
It's a town, it's a town buffer, so if, if, if it's okay to plant there, I mean, we didn't, we didn't really go nutty in there, because it's obviously a buffer, so.
Right, okay, I mean, the way we looked at it, I think that would help to screen from people coming down from Fishkill Woods.
Okay.
And, but I, I'm happy with what you've come up with, because that's exactly what we're thinking.
Okay, well, so we'll relocate that line on Old Gawnham up towards the fence line. And you want us to add trees to the, to the east, on the east side?
Yes, that would be great if you could.
I guess if they're in any area where there's a little bit of wetness, something, some evergreen type that would do well, do better in that type of environment.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk. I mean, you're up on a ridge there, the, it actually drops off just to the left of the arrow. There's actually a, there's a pretty, it's about an eight-foot depression there, but where the arrow is now, you have the ability to plant, but again, you're in the buffer. So as long as you're okay with putting.
I think plantings in the buffer area should be okay. I mean, we can check that out further, but I don't see why there would be a problem with that.
Okay, we'll do.
As long as there's no other ground disturbance other than the, you know, the root ball plantings.
Yeah, how far down would you like us to go? Would you like us to go to the, to the back of the, the third row, where we have triple, right about there?
I don't know that it would need to go that.
That may be a lot more, that's a lot more than what we were thinking.
So you want to go to the?
I think at the corner there where you're pointing is probably.
Okay, right there?
Yeah, that would be good. I was thinking about that myself.
Okay.
I also like the idea of moving the landscaping screening on the Old Gawnham roadside up toward the parking lot, because I think that would allow whatever natural vegetation there is down by the road to, you know, remain without disturbing that further.
Okay, we can do that. That's, that's pretty much the changes that were made. We made some other revisions to the plans based on comments. We received the comments from the town engineer's office. For the most part, we, we concur with the comments as we have. The lot consolidation plan has been prepared. We are, I think that everyone's aware, we will file that once we receive site plan, so that, once we receive site plan, that lot will then be combined as, all three of those lots will be one lot, which would eliminate the, the issue about the variance. But again, we'll, we'll show a separate lot consolidation plan, but there'll be a note on it that will be filed once the plan is signed by the chairman, if that's okay with the board. Traffic you guys have talked about, we can talk more if you choose. I think as far as the SWIP, I think we're pretty close there. It's down to nits and lice, I think.
Yeah, in fact, we, we, we just, our comment right now, as it stands, is the final SWIP shall be prepared at the time when you're ready for final approval. And that would just cover any, you know, potential changes to the drainage. I'm not anticipating that you're going to do that, but we did have a couple of questions about pipe clearances.
Yep.
So, not that that would necessarily impact anything, but, yeah, I would agree that you're, you're close, very close on stormwater.
As far as board of health, we, as you know, we can't submit until we have a neg deck. Same with the DOT, we can't submit to them until we have a neg deck, so.
Right, so a lot of these comments that are in, in the memo that I prepared are going to remain until this project advances. One thing I will note, we did, you know, like, was discussed with the previous application. They, they have retaining walls shown, so they will need to provide the design and calfs for that.
We've done it, we'll submit it.
Just wanted to mention under your seeker, part of the memo, that the planning board did establish itself as lead agency November 18, 2021, I believe, so that's been done. So, can we talk a little bit more about the traffic impact study? So I know that CPL's traffic engineer was not able to make it to the meeting tonight, but John indicated that he, you know, could probably answer most of the questions that the board might have, and if not, then we can relay questions to Jennifer, how do you pronounce her last name, Mitch Nevis?
Mitch Nevich is my best guess, but I've actually never met her, so.
We'll call her.
Jennifer M.
Yeah, and so I just, I was, I went back and looked at Jennifer's memo, and she had basically, I think, four recommendations, which I think you outlined pretty well for us. One of them being the intersections study, she had suggested adding the I-84 ramps. Yeah, I, myself, I'm not sure, I've seen a lot of traffic studies before, and I'm not so sure that the ramps to an interstate highway would really tell us that much more than we already know. We've already picked up most of the traffic flow from the other intersections that, that had been looked at. But I thought some of her points on the, the turning movements in particular were good.
Yeah, I mean, like I said earlier, it's, you know, a lot of that is ultimately going to be part of the DOT work permit, right? So they're going to make the final determination on, on what the turning movements are going to look like and whether we need a left turn lane on the highway. Even, even, they may even look to restrict movements at one of the, one of the driveways or something like that. So, you know, that's all going to be part of that, that highway work permit ultimately.
Now, just out of curiosity, do you know where most of the trucks carrying cars to the facility will be coming from? Would, would it most likely be mostly from I-84?
I would imagine, I'm not sure, yeah, yeah, that's the anticipation.
Well, one, one thing I'm wondering is that turning lane warrant analysis. Is that something that would be difficult to do, you know, even before DOT weighs in? And I'm, I'm not sure what the timing of DOT weigh-in will be.
I can actually touch on both of those points. So, number one, no, it would not be difficult for us to do that analysis. Just off the top of my head, knowing the corridor and what the project's going to generate, I can, I can pretty much, pretty confidently say that the warrant analysis, based on the volumes, would show that a left turn lane is warranted. There are other considerations that kind of go into that, and, and you have to look at the entire corridor, so that's where DOT's determination is going to come in. But, so we can certainly provide that analysis in response to this. The, the other point about when DOT is going to weigh in, I actually spoke with the reviewer, Jason Brenner, at DOT today, and he's in the process of reviewing this, and, and he didn't see anything major when I spoke to him, but he couldn't give me any formal comments at the time, but he did anticipate having something, something to us by next week. So I think that would be, you know, more than prior to the next meeting, so.
And then that left turn conflict lane with the queuing analysis was her other recommendation, which is kind of similar, but how difficult would that be? And if they, if you have those already in hand for DOT to, you know, review and make determinations, I'm just thinking maybe that will even help speed up the process a little bit.
So, so the queuing analysis is actually part of our analysis already. It's not, it was just not formally summarized in the study, right? So that queuing analysis is in the detailed analysis that we already provided. If you look at that, it doesn't really show any significant queues in, at that western driveway location where she was most concerned about.
Right.
DOT is going to look at that already, I, without me providing them anything formal, but I, I've actually already prepared a response to that comment specifically, and I'll, I can provide the formal information summary of that.
Okay, I think that would be helpful, yep. Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think the traffic impact study was helpful, and it kind of documents the conditions out there. We all know that it is a crowded roadway, but it really, it's, it's all relevant. It's not crowded to people like me who came from Westchester County, you know. So, level, level of service C at really most of the intersections where the capacity analyses were done is, you know, your normal, acceptable levels of service.
Yep.
So my understanding is that, that the study didn't really show anything traffic congestion-wise that was unusual for that quarter.
Yeah, agreed. And, and really, the only location that, that showed any level of service lower than a C was actually exiting the site driveway, which really is more of a, a, a site concern than, than a, you know, an operation of the project concern rather than a, a traffic impact concern, right? So, so really, that's the only, that was the only location that, that noted that.
All right, well, do any board members have any more specific questions on the traffic analysis? Or do you want any further, you know, explanation of any of it? Yeah, it's a difficult document to get through if you haven't looked at too many traffic studies, but if you have any questions, this would be a good time to ask.
No, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. I had a couple of other, just quick observations about the plan in general. So you were talking about the planting schedule, LP1. There actually is missing for the planting size on the Norway spruce. That was the, the spruce, no planting height listed there. I would assume it's probably going to be the same six to seven foot height to be consistent with the white spruce that you did mention. So that should just be filled in on the planting schedule.
Okay.
So I think the other main thing I wanted to just revisit was this, the new local law on historic structures and sites, and to see whether, Dominic, whether you maybe had a chance to take a look at that and what the applicability of that might be to this project. Now, having said that, I also know that the town board may be considering amending that new law on historic resources to exempt or grandfather certain types of applications that were submitted to the planning board prior to adoption of the law. But I haven't seen any of those amendments. I know the town board has talked about considering that at one of their upcoming meetings, so that whole question may be moot, but I thought we should just air that out again here before we get too much farther along.
No, thank, thank you for flagging that issue. That's, that's ongoing for my review. After the last meeting, I was on vacation, and so I've been paying the consequences of that since that time, and would propose to report back to the board the next time that this matters on the agenda.
Once possible by then, if the town board is, is going to adopt amendments to that law, that, that could be in place fairly soon.
That was what I saw when I had, I had, I had a free night, not really. I doubled up on a night. What I saw was there were half a dozen, fewer than half a dozen projects, but it sounded like from the language from the February 2nd town board meeting that this is a project that would fall within the ambit of the grandfather clause that they were going to adopt and foresaw. Now, whether the town board adopts that, you know, there's all, all the vagaries of, of that fact, but it did seem like some recognition of that argument that was in our letter, even, as you recall, that we, we had written to you that said, you know, was curious, had been, that cudgel had been taken up. And I still think we have, and I, I know that Dominic, you know, recognizing his schedule, he hasn't had a chance to take a look at it. I still think there's the, the waiver aspect as, as a route, too, here.
Right, so those are things we can, we don't have to decide anything tonight, and we can see how the town board does with their, their consideration.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I, I would say is, you know, if there's a, it's sort of, I wouldn't want to be in a situ, well, let me rephrase that. I would hope that we're, we're leaning towards that waiver as a comfort factor, because we, we closed the public hearing tonight, and, and to lose the time, you know, that's, that's the whole issue for us, right? It's been, been the time. So if there's any hesitancy, let's schedule it for a public hearing for next, you know what I'm saying? You know, if, if, if there's any fear of a third route needing to go here, you know, I think route one is the town board may moot this issue. Route two is the waiver argument that we crafted and provided to you all several meetings ago. I'm assuming one of those two ways will prevail, and we're not going to go the third way, which is to start us at the top of this process and all of a sudden sort of jettison all the other hard work that's been done to try and progress. So.
Yeah.
So sort of speak now if there, if there is.
I, I think I, in, in one form, or similar to what you had suggested in your letter from, I'm beginning to lose track of time now, but where you did talk about the possibility of simply a planning board resolution incorporating the fact that we've studied this issue, and it was basically part of our seeker review, and it was signed off by Shippo.
Yep.
That says a lot to me, anyway, so the best of all worlds would be if the town board does adopt an amendment, and we can just simply go with that.
Agreed.
All right. Sure, go ahead.
At one of your board meetings, you had asked the attorney to take a look at if what Joel decided was okay. I get to hear what he found. Did he find an area where that was an acceptable use of the property? Or, I mean, it just seems like it keeps going, and it almost feels to me like these public hearings are just basically a mockery, because nobody's listening. I still haven't gotten the answer to that question. I don't think anybody has. And so, you know, I understand their position. They want to get this through, and they want to be grandfathered, but maybe back at the beginning, if there was a problem, and I would like to hear what, what he found.
Well, I won't speak for Dominic, but I, I think along with Dominic's, let's say hiatus from the real world for a, a week or so, probably hasn't had time to look at that yet, but I'm sure we will be talking about it, just not tonight.
Okay, so if we keep moving forward, what if then, just what if hypothetically, he finds out that that's not completely.
I, I mean, I.
We're not going to talk about hypotheticals.
I'm not sure that more discussion from, not the sound room, to the, the public hearing. I, I understand, I understand the comment, but I think it's a little inappropriate. We're starting to get into a, I think the point was made, I, I think we should move, the point was made.
Yeah, asked and answered a few times.
I, I understand, but I just.
No, excuse me, excuse me.
I think we're getting into Q and A.
We're, we're not accepting further comments on that matter right now. We will.
There's also a venue issue on top of all of it, right? I mean, you have to render unto Caesar what is Caesar's. This is not the right venue for, for any of that any longer.
And we will be addressing that amongst our further discussions. It just won't be tonight. All right, any other comments or questions from board members on any of what we've talked about? Or any of the plant revisions? So. So, one of the next steps we're going to need to take is preparation of draft EAF, parts two and three, and a dra, perhaps a draft neg deck. But I'll turn to Dominic and John for some input on whether, so, we did close the public hearing with an additional period for submission of written comments. But we do have some remaining items that are going to be addressed in the traffic impact study. So, my own impression is that we probably shouldn't authorize the preparation of those seeker documents until we have the additional traffic study information.
That would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
So, so wait, how does, how is that going to work here? We got a no cut starting March 31st. Are we going to have a special meeting then? How are we going to get there?
That's not, actually, that's not our issue to solve.
It may not be your issue to solve, but there's also a process, and, you know, I mean, it's a commercial site plan, and we've been at it for 10 months.
Yes, and, and if I may--
But wait, but wait, the issues, even if, I'm sorry, Dominic, I apologize, because I, I, I'll listen first, but I'm sorry.
The traffic study was submitted in December. It was reviewed. Now, it's been provided additional comments where additional analysis is required. That analysis, and I understand that ultimately, certain improvements along the roadway would be up to the DOT. That gives short shrift to the fact that this board is lead agency under SEACR and has to make certain findings under SEACR, including in connection with traffic. So, as a result, the board's own consultant, CPL, is recommending that additional analysis be provided. It's a question of the timing of the submission, nothing else. And so, you know, the, if you're inferring, you know, that, that there's intentional delay or delay that's going to prevent your client from clearing the trees, these are long lead time items, unfortunately, that take, that take time.
And, and I'm not, it wasn't meant as an aggressive comment. It's, it's a comment of frustration. How, you're, it, you're a property owner in town. You are being responsible. You have a fantastic team that has been coming forward. How far in advance do you have to start a project? Now, I know Indiana bats not your doing. It's Fish and Wildlife and DEC making a determination and, and so forth, but it's sort of, how hard is it going to be to do business in, in Fishkill? There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a challenge here. And I'm not, everyone, your volunteers, you're doing a great job. We're in the middle of COVID. It, I'm not saying it that way. I'm just sort of saying, like, how far in advance doesn't, you know, there's a roomful of applicants behind me, and, and how far in advance did they need to start a process to think reasonably to get through it? This is a dealership, this is an entity that has another dealership in town, has been through the process, brought a really great team forward, and it's just, a little bit of help would be, would be, would be, especially when we've done every ask that you've asked of us, we've met.
The SEACR process is not exclusive to the town of Fishkill.
But no, but, but, but the reality here is, and I said this five months ago about when we had a conversation about closing the public hearing, you can send CPL's memo to DOT, and they can throw it right in the circular trash bin. It's their road. You can make the recommendations, but the reality here is that, you know, I, I dealt with this in another community where we spent an inordinate amount of time because they desperately wanted a traffic light in front of our project. And DOT told them repeatedly, no. And they held us up for six months to go through that process. And, and, and they, it was like, are you sure DOT, you're sure you're sure? Through the circle. And DOT was like, yeah, we're sure, we're sure, we're sure, we're sure. And, and, and so what I'm sort of saying here is ultimately, DOT is, and you can say it more eloquently than that, they're going to take CPL's memo, because I'm sure you're going to send it up to them, and they're going to take whatever additional data that we're going to repackage, because I think that's a large part of what Rich was saying, is the regressionary analysis and data is actually in the report that was provided to you. He's just going to repackage that in order to distill it for you, which CPL's traffic engineer has the ability to have done already, rather than just have asked the questions they could have answered their own question through some self-help.
Yeah, I, I never did too well in high school with regression analysis, so.
It was the DXDY on the integers that killed me.
I like, I like, I like the verbal summaries of--
I, I know, but I'm, I'm just sort of saying is, I, I, there are some issues that I really act, actually, and it hasn't happened in the course, I would readily capitulate and acknowledge that are really super germane and salient to you as the locality. What happens on 52 really is a corridor issue. I mean, even Chairman, as you sort of acknowledged, you know, going all the way out to, to the 84 on ramp, off ramp, these are corridor-related issues that you have to think about. And then, as has been pointed out, and I don't, I shouldn't be talking traffic. I really shouldn't yield to you, but we, the dealership that this is a replacement for is down the road, and everything comes in on 84 already. And the right-of-way is wide enough, in fact, we've had enough problems with the right-of-way that we've all discussed relative to how to properly plant the landscaping, that we all know the right-of-way is wide enough that whatever decision they decide, whether we have to have mountable curbs, you know, in, in order to narrow that 50 feet down to, what, 35 we're looking at, right? Or it's a left-hand deceleration lane that's needed. That's all going to be decided by DOT, and no matter what we want, what you want, it's, it's a DOT road corridor bigger issue. So, what I was hoping could happen is let's prepare all the resolution packet, and if you don't feel satisfied by the work that we have to do beforehand, then obviously, you're not going to act. But I know you don't like to go into restaurants that, that require reservations, but that is the analogy that I'm going to use again.
So, let me ask a question, because my understanding is that there is an exception process for submitting to DEC regarding the, the tree cutting issue, the seasonal tree restrictions. And I'm, I've never been really clear on what exactly that entails, but there is a possibility of submitting to DEC with whatever the appropriate data is that they need to see to make exceptions to their restrictions.
I'm not an expert on it either, but essentially, what you have to do is, because the whole issue is that, and, and Dominic is probably more facile with this than I am, admittedly. But essentially, the issue here is that the mother bats are opportunistic, and they're looking for trees that have niches and, and spaces essentially to be maternal for, for their brood. And so, you actually literally have to go out there, significant, they have to come back first. So, the, so the no cut period is, is started early enough to give them time to come back and not have that interruption. So, you're starting, the no cut period starts early and ends late in order to help brooding. So, what you then have to do is you have to wait, actually, in order to figure out if a mama decided to be opportunistic and set up brooding in a tree on your site, and then you need to actually study that for a period of time to confirm that they're actually there in order to then move forward. Is that--
You know, I, I wouldn't even know how to respond to that, you know, with a mama bat and, and whatnot, but, but it's, 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 yes, it's largely corrected. It, it, going to DEC to get confirmation that you don't have to abide by the tree removal restrictions and the timing is difficult because you, you essentially have to prove that there's not bats on the property. And, and there's a number of different methodologies that you can use to do that, including sonar testing, where you record and looking for, for sonar signatures from very specific bats, because it's not all bat sonar. And it's, it's a bit time-intensive, and of course, it can only happen during a time when the bats are out. So, if it was, you know, something that was being proposed to take place now, it's not possible because the bats are in their hibernacula. So, they're in their caves. So, you know, mama bats in the cave.
Well, I'll ask the board for this, because I don't want to make any specific comments without asking the board, but would a compromise be to request that our consultants prepare the part two and three EAF and the possibility of a neg deck for the March 10th meeting, which still may make it rather difficult to make that March 31st deadline, but depending on what the results of the traffic impact study revisions with the further work, depending how they come in, we can incorporate any of that into the SEACR documents. I'm still not sure where that would put us in terms of a resolution of preliminary approval, but why don't we start with a question to the board of would you, how would you feel about asking our consultants to prepare the SEACR paperwork for our possible consideration at the March 10th meeting, based on what we've just been talking about? And again, we don't have to approve them or even consider them if we feel it's not time yet, but at least they'll be, the paperwork would be here if we, let me ask John first of all, because that's kind of what your, your thing would be.
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly don't have any issue preparing them, especially knowing that the board does not necessarily have to act on them if they're not happy with whatever response is, is given between now and, and the next meeting. What I heard tonight was that it sounded like they were going to get feedback from the DOT, perhaps as soon as next week. That's encouraging, so, but you never know. I mean, you know, we've waited for things from DOT for months and months, so.
I know.
But, I, you know, I, I think what my colleague put in writing was mostly favorable towards the, the traffic impact study. I don't think what was asked for additional analysis was a, a real heavy lift, so, but it's, it, they're right. It ultimately is the DOT's road and, and their call as to what gets done.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I would be in favor of having the documents ready, just in case. We've done it before in the past, and I don't think there's anything wrong. But if we, we think that it's not right, then we don't have to act on it. But if it's, we think we're ready to act on it, then at least it's there, and we can act.
Let me put it this way. Would any board members have any objection to doing it that way?
No.
All right. So, would somebody like to make a motion to ask our consultants to prepare draft parts two and three EAF and a draft neg deck, assuming that that's what our consultant's analysis leads to? I mean, we could end up with a pos deck, who knows? But whatever, the SEACR paperwork for the March 10th, 2022 meeting, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oops, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes six to zero.
Thank you.
So, we will continue the discussion at the March 10th meeting.
Quick question.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I think there's four outstanding items in the CPL letter that we really, for the most part, need to respond to. I just want to make sure that, you know, for the next meeting, we're putting our best foot forward when we give you the information that you want. The, relative to the ramps at 84, my personal opinion is the analysis is not going to show anything there, but is it your opinion that you want to see an analysis of those intersections to, for, to respond fully to that comment is really my question?
Let me turn to John and just get your thoughts on that.
Well, I, you know, I, I don't have a, a lot of experience with, with traffic engineering. I, I would prefer to defer that question to Ms. Mishnevich, but if, if that's something that the board is comfortable just eliminating from the, the further analysis, we can certainly do that as well.
And I guess the other way to approach it is, is we could do a qualitative analysis where, where we use volume information that, that's available from the state to identify what generally is the volumes of coming off the ramps, coming, going through the intersections at those locations, and compare it to what our project's going to generate through there, and give you an idea of what the additional traffic is. But again, you know, we're talking about this as a, a replacement for the existing facility that's down the street, so a lot of that traffic's already going through there. So, you know, we would make some qualifications on that, but that, that's another way to approach it also.
And I think if, you know, if I may, if you, if you responded in that way and, and made it clear that this is actually a replacement project--
Yep.
--that may not have gotten, you know, that, that may not have been considered in, in her review, so.
So, I think that would probably be a helpful way to, to simply respond, at least to her comments and her--
Yeah, I, yeah, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, what we gave, give you for next month is, satisfies the information you're looking for, so.
Good, that sounds good. Okay, thank you all.
I, I just want to throw this out there. I mean, is, is there any benefit to having their consultant contact Jennifer directly if there's, there are any questions?
Yeah, that probably sounds like a good idea. And--
Okay.
So, I think we, the board could authorize that kind of a phone call, or, you know, some kind of telecommunication approach.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just think, you know, it cuts me out of the middle if there are any, you know, loss of information in the transfer, so I think it might be a good idea.
Let me pose this as, is there a motion to authorize our CPL traffic engineering consultant to have direct communications with the Healy--
Yes, please, so moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. No, any abstentions? Hearing none. That passes six to zero. All right. We are getting on the late side, so I, I would recommend we just keep moving and try to get through it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, Senator. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, the next item I had to recuse myself anyway, just like the last few meetings.
Thank you, Rebbie. Okay, so we have a waterfront at Fishkill, Phase 5, Overlook Point Townhouses, amended site development plan, board to review draft letter to file, and also, we're going to be reviewing the draft EAF part two and draft neg deck that wasn't mentioned in the agenda. So, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. David Cooper, partner with the law firm of Zerrin and Steinmetz, here representing the applicant Toll Brothers. Can we, we second the, the motion of, yeah, let's just keep on going to try to get this done.
So--
We're at the end as well.
I don't think we need any specific discussion from you at this point, but I think we'll ask John to go over. CPL has provided draft EAF part two and a draft neg deck, so why don't we go through those documents?
Sure. Start with the, the, the draft EAF, the, the one item that was checked as a potential small impact was the proposed actual result and the change in the use or intensity of use of land. Now, again, this, this is, we're comparing this to an already approved project, so we, we viewed it as such, and the, the SEACR work that was done previously still holds. So, if the board agrees with that, we've also prepared a draft neg deck, and we tag this as an unlisted action. Description of the action, the applicant is seeking an amendment to existing site-- Description of the action, the applicant has seeking an amendment to existing site development plan approval granted by the board on August 8, 2019. The original project was subject to rezoning for which a draft GEIS and FGGEIS were prepared and submitted and reviewed by the Fishkill Town Board, which issued a statement of findings for the project in November 20, 1989. The original project received a final site development plan approval on August 22, 1991. Planning board adopted a resolution to preliminary and final approval of amended site development plan approval on April 23, 2008, and October 8, 2009. The current amendment would be for updates to the plan, including a new building footprint and an increase in the number of bedrooms from the approved 217 to 294. Portions of gravity sewer behind proposed buildings 7, 8, 9, and 10 are also proposed to be removed. The site is located in the RMF 5 zoning district, and the lot will be served by public water and sewer facilities, and the proposed action will involve approximately 15.3 acres of The planning board of the town of Fishkill, its lead agency, has reviewed the action, identified all relevant areas of environmental concern, and has considered the project plans and completed the EAF forms, parts 1 and 2, and all relevant supporting documentation, and has compared the impacts that can be reasonably expected result from the proposed action with the criteria set forth in 6 NYCRR 617, and hereby determines that no significant adverse impacts associated with the proposed action have been identified, and therefore preparation of an environmental impact statement is not required. And the board makes these findings based on the following, erosion and sediment control measures, including silt fencing, will be implemented to contain any siltation on site. The proposed action will result in an increase in noise pollution during the construction phase, however, this will be mitigated by the fact that construction is temporary, and hours of construction will be in accordance with town zoning requirements, and the proposed action will not result in any impacts on geological features, flooding, groundwater, air, agricultural, aesthetic, open spaces, and recreation, and energy sources, or transportation systems, human health, community plans, or community character.
Thank you, John. Any questions or comments on either document from board members? No. I think it looks pretty straightforward. I didn't see any corrections that needed to be made. Dominic, do they look okay to you?
Nothing further, no.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to approve the EAF Part II as discussed and authorize the chair to sign?
Mr. Chairman, just one question, sorry. I just want to, I want to make sure, I believe it does, but that the, that the neg deck would cover the lot line revision that what that's going to come subsequently is, once there's a letter to the file, the survey will be completed and finalized and then submitted to the, to the town per the new law?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, is there a motion for the EAF Part II?
So moved.
Anthony moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes. How about a motion to approve?
We didn't have an abstention. Did you get...
Oh, yeah.
So, that, yeah, we always...
Sorry about that.
Actually, there'd be five in favor, zero against, and one abstention. Thank you. And how about a motion to approve the neg deck as discussed tonight and authorize the chair to sign the neg deck?
So moved. Second.
Suzanne moved it. Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. So, that passes, five, zero, one abstention. Okay, so then, we have the draft letter to file. I'm not sure we really need to run through that specifically. I think everyone has probably had a chance to look at it, and it's kind of a pretty standard form memo that we put together for these simple amendments. There's one correction I saw in the second paragraph, line two at the end, where it says, waive any further public hearing requirements, and, and then there's an aye.
Aye.
That should come out.
Yep.
But that's, that's the only thing I noticed. So, I don't know, Dominic, have you had a chance to take a look at that?
I did review it, I did not have any comments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from, boy?
No, none, Mr. Chairman, no.
Wrap your pending rubber or something.
Yeah, or just not hold it.
There you go. Whatever works, John.
All right, so, I will need a motion to approve this minor site development plan amendment through this memo to file to the billing department, as discussed and revised tonight. This is based on the finding that the minor modifications proposed have no significant impacts compared to the previously approved site development plan, and subject to the town engineer's comments in CPL's January 11, 2022 letter. Also, this would be to waive any public hearings on this matter and authorize the chair to sign this memo to file. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Anthony moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. All right, I think we're all set.
Thank you very much, see you in a second, a couple minutes.
All right, thank you. All right, while I'm putting my papers away, I'll read the next item, lands of Charles and Kathleen Brownell, two lot subdivision, board to review application and supporting documentation that was accepted and referred by the planning board at their regularly scheduled meeting on January 13, 2022. And this is one of those cases where we...
Ryan, can you come back?
Yeah.
Yes, Robbie, you can come back for this one, yep.
I'm just going to run and get that so she can pull my file.
All right.
You can do that, too, you know. I'm just seconding command.
So, while she's pulling it up, why don't we start off, since we're getting a little bit low on time, and just welcome tonight, and just, if you could just briefly re-summarize the proposal, and I mean briefly...
I'll do that. Again, my name is Abino Alanza, I'm from the Potolee Alanza Architectural Group, and I'm here representing the Brownells, and I have Ben Brownell with me here this evening. The action generally consists of a simple two lot subdivision on the lands that the Brownells have resided on in Old Glenham Road since 1975. Parcel 1 would be 6.33 acres, and it would consist of a simple, would contain the existing residence, outbuildings, and easterly driveway. The second parcel would be, would be 1.27 acres. It'd be used to build a new house for Ben, and it would also include the existing westerly driveway.
If you'd like some more detail, I'd give it to you, but I think that generally sums it up.
Yeah, I think that's fine for now, and if there are any questions as we go through this, the board members, I'm sure, will ask you. All right, John, do you want to go through your memo?
Yeah, sure. The majority of our comments are really more of the housekeeping type. I would think the one item that I would bring to your attention, and I believe this was mentioned at the last meeting, was that if there are going to be shared services, that the easements necessary for those should be provided now, so that there are no issues with potential change in ownership in the future. Is that something that you've considered?
We've addressed that.
You have?
We actually have dropped the package off with the town on February 7th and addressed all of your comments.
Okay.
All, yeah, realizing we haven't seen any of that.
Oh, no, 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 and I did that. We did that to maximize the amount of time that was available to you, for you to review them for the next meeting, but, but we did want to make sure that you were aware that we, we listened to everything you had to say at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, that's, that's good to know, that we'll be seeing that shortly, I guess, so, I don't know if you want me to go through any of the, the other items, they're all pretty minor. I would say it's a pretty thorough plan set. They, they are in the aquifer protection overlay zone, but they do comply with, with the density requirements, so there are no issues there. And my understanding is that you also addressed the OPRHP...
Exactly, we've submitted the letter from them. Their finding letter indicated that there would be no impact to cultural or historic resources.
Yeah, and...
That's helpful.
And I know they also have made headway with the, the Health Department, because I had a conversation with the review engineer who covers this area on another matter, and he mentioned this project. So, I think we, we mentioned that, that footing drain should be moved. I think that was one of the only things they were looking for as well.
And we did that already as well.
So, yeah, so they're, they're in good shape with their plan set, it sounds like. I would certainly not have any reservations about the board scheduling a public hearing at this point.
Let me ask Dominic, so it sounds like the historic and cultural resources law is not going to be an issue, and we have that sign off from SHPO, and we'll, we'll see that at the next meeting.
Yes.
But it sounds like there could be a possible issue with the aquifer protection law. So, that's something we're going to have to at least consider as we move forward. Have you had a chance to, at least, to take a look at that aquifer protection law? Now, from my understanding is, this application was submitted after the adoption of that law, so it wouldn't be exempted, per se, from the law if the town board does amend it.
That's correct.
So...
Mr. Chair, we have, we have no problem with the applicability of that law. We went through, we went through that section and hit point by point, and in effect, we do meet the, the density criteria in there, and the letter that we provided or submitted on February 7th does include the calculations that demonstrate that we meet that density requirement.
Okay, so we'll, we'll pick that up with discussion at the next meeting. Okay, so, yeah, those, that was really all that I was going to raise. I don't know if board members have any other questions at this point that you want to ask?
No, the easement was the big concern at the last meeting, and he's already said he's addressed it, so let's see what it says and go from there. But I think I would support scheduling a public hearing for the next month's meeting.
And if, you know, if there are any questions, if necessary, we can always keep the public hearing open. All right. Also, so, we should formally classify this action as an unlisted action, which I think was the recommendation in John's memo. So, would someone like to make a motion to classify this application for the proposed lands of Brownell, two lot subdivision, as an unlisted action and to conduct an uncoordinated environmental review pursuant to CBL?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony moves it. Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have any abstentions? Robbie is back, so that should be, so it's voted six to zero. And then we need a motion to schedule a public hearing for the March 10th, 2022 meeting on this application, as soon thereafter as 7:00 PM as possible. Would someone like to move that?
So moved.
Moved by Felix, is there a second?
Second.
Robbie? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so we have set a public hearing for this application for March 10th. We do need to consider where we will put the public hearing sign on this property or signs. Let's see how this will work. So, this has frontage on quite a bit of, this is on Old Glenham Road.
Old Glenham Road, yeah, and I would, I would think near the westerly access drive would be, would be appropriate. That's where the mailbox is, that's where the, one can get a view down the driveway to where the main house is, and one can easily see where the proposed house would be.
All right, does that sound good to the board members?
Yeah, as long as it's a visible spot from, from those traveling along the road, then yeah, I don't see any issue with that.
Okay. All right, so we're good with that, we don't need a vote on that. So, just one sign at that westerly access drive on Old Glenham Road. Okay.
Can I make a couple more requests?
Yeah.
Really, I think that in consideration of the lengthy document that we provided that, that addressed the historic and cultural resource protections, as well as the aquifer protections, that I think that there really are no, and I think John just made testament to the septic systems not being an issue with the Health Department, I really think environmentally, we're pretty clear, and documentation should demonstrate that this would be no adverse impact. So, I'd like to request the board to authorize the consultants to prepare a negative declaration for the next meeting as well. I think we should be able to get through that, and again, we, we need a negative deck before we can, we have the issue of Indiana bats as well. So, with the, with the issuance of a negative deck, we can get a clearing permit, hopefully in sufficient time to get the necessary clearing done before the, before the deadline, which is, I think, March 31st. And again, just as the, the previous applicant indicated, the, the fact that you would have the negative declaration prepared doesn't mean that you necessarily have to pass it if, if for any reason any of the board members or any of your consultants feel that the, the environmental issues haven't been appropriately addressed.
What do board members think about that?
Well, we did it once tonight.
Yeah, we did it once, but...
So, it would sure look bad if we didn't do it here.
Well, but let me just, let me just mention, let me just mention the fact that we actually haven't seen any of the new material yet that has been submitted, but not formally, because it didn't meet the submission date for the night, so we haven't seen any of that.
Right.
So, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. This, you know, it's, I don't think we've set a precedent that we need to rush through applications because of that window, and I don't think that's what we did with Healy. Actually, just the opposite, with Healy, we've been going for quite a long time on that application. This one is brand new. I don't think I've ever seen one where we've authorized our consultants to prepare secret documents, you know, from this meeting, the first one after the project was accepted. So, that's my own feeling.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I know that they want to move along, but we haven't even seen the, what's been cemented at this point.
Any thoughts, Dominic?
Yeah, your point's well taken, and you haven't had a public hearing yet either.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate the, the sense of urgency, but, you know, there's still additional homework that the board has to review.
So, I appreciate your request, but I...
And we appreciate you, you need to... And we appreciate you need to feel comfortable with it.
Yep. Okay. So I think we're good for tonight.
Okay.
We'll see you at the March meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, moving right along here. We have the Johnson Trail Subdivision, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on January 26, 2022. Welcome.
Hi. I don't know how in depth you guys want us to go, considering we haven't submitted since September.
Yeah, I mean, just if you could give us a brief update on the plans, and we'll... We have the subdivision plans on the screen.
Yeah, so since the last submission, not much has changed the layout of the plans. We still have the road going out to Mountain View Road, and then it's five new lots proposed and one existing lot that's going to have a line realignment to accommodate for that road. Since the last submission, we submitted the archaeological survey along with the SWIP. And then I believe the tree survey was submitted in September, but we provided it again. The archaeological survey came back as no... There was a lack of findings, so no further investigation is required. So I think we're all set with that. And then we also provided the soil testing that was done a while back.
Okay. All right, John, do you want to outline your memo briefly?
Sure. I mean, there are a lot of carryover comments, meeting with the highway superintendent, getting the fire department to weigh in on the road design and the hammerhead. Those are things that we'll need sooner than later. It was mentioned that a SWIP was submitted. That is true. It was a basic SWIP just to outline the erosion and sediment control. Now, this is a residential development, and right now their limited disturbance is less than the five acre threshold that would kick them into preparation of a full SWIP. However, we did have discussions with Mike in previous meetings that some form of drainage analysis would be submitted, and we still haven't seen that. So again, you know, it does appear that they have excellent soils out there for the type of drainage design they're doing. But until we see some actual calculations, we can't really make any recommendations to the board as to how comfortable we are with it. And we've asked for some additional design information on the road. You know, just basic stuff that would come with any typical road design, such as vertical curve data, horizontal curve data. They're showing the cul-de-sac at a grade of less than 1%, which is really not a good thing for drainage purposes. So there are a number of issues that we'd like to see cleaned up before we recommend the board go in too far with this. And again, this is, you know, it's been a while since they've been here. This is another one that appears to be potentially impacted by the aquifer overlay zone. However, it may also be one of those projects that the board, the Town Board, is considering, you know, grandfathering. So until we know what direction they're going in, we don't know if this is directly going to impact them.
My name is Joe Pettinell. I'm the developer. I do want to address... Hi. I do want to address that, as you know, the application was submitted prior to the law being enacted, and it's being considered the grandfathering clause. The second thing I wanted to point out is in that law, on page three, it states residential density regulations. The following standards apply to all land in the aquifer protection overlay zone where use of wells and/or septics is proposed. In areas mapped on the aquifer and water supply resources and aquifer protection overlay zone map as sand and gravel, which, as you know, that's what it is, which have higher rates of aquifer recharge, 18 inches of aquifer recharge annually. The maximum residential density shall be one unit per 40,000 square feet. So we would comply with the bulk regulations pursuant to the existing law.
Right, and that's another question that I would, I guess, defer to the people who actually wrote the law because if you look at the actual map of where those areas are, your particular area isn't included, even though it appears to meet the definition of the type of soil that they're looking for.
Right.
So there may be ways to prove that out.
Right. And we also have submitted to the board health, so they have all the samples and so forth, deep and per test that were done.
Understood, yeah.
I think the Town Board intends to act fairly quickly on the exemption of, you know, grandfathering. So we should know probably, well, maybe by the March meeting.
I believe the March 5th meeting is, I believe.
Is that right?
March 2nd.
March 2nd.
For the Town Board's public hearing on that, yeah. All right. Yeah, I appreciate the archaeological Phase 1A and B study. That was very good, and I think it adequately documented the lack of artifacts out on the site. So I don't think we would have a problem with that local law that deals with the historic and cultural resources, and archaeological would be included in that. At the last meeting... This is a question, really. At the last meeting, which was a while ago, we talked about the name of Johnson Court as the road name. I think the planning board actually discussed it and found that that name would be acceptable, but subject to checking with the appropriate road naming authorities. I'm not quite sure who that would be. It's probably someone in the county.
911 addressing office.
That's what I... Yeah, I thought it was either the county clerk.
And they get approved by the Town Board, too.
Yeah. But I think if the applicant, if you guys would just check with 911 on that and make sure there are no substantially similar names or spellings of names, I think we probably could be all set with that. But again, that's sort of down the road, so to speak, anyway. Sorry. So, I don't know, any questions from board members at this point? Again, I think as John indicated, we still have a ways to go on this one. But we're getting closer. Do you have any questions in terms of what you need to do?
Uh, no. If we need to, you could contact John directly, correct? If we have any questions, well, comments?
We could authorize that. And, yeah, actually, if there's anything, John, that you think would be helpful, you know, might be appropriate for you to...
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea because there are a couple of things that we've asked for repeatedly that doesn't seem to be getting across. So I would actually encourage you to allow that to happen so that we can hopefully help get them moving in the right direction.
All right. Could we have a motion to authorize CPL to speak directly with the applicants to follow up on a number of the matters that were outlined in the CPL memo?
Some move.
Suzanne moves that. Is there a second?
Second.
Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're good on that one. So do you have any... So you don't have any other questions for us? Not? We'll see you next time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, again, I had to refuse.
Yep, one more recusal. So the last project review tonight, I believe, is Van Wick Muse, amended site development plan, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on January 26, 2022. Welcome again.
Good to see you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Cooper, partner with the law firm, is Aaron Steinmetz, here representing the applicant, Toll Brothers, the owner of the property. With me tonight is Eric Shuladon and Adam Pedelin from Inside Engineering, as well as Greg Otis, representative of Toll Brothers. At the last meeting, your board sent us home with some homework on three issues. One was sidewalks and evaluating whether or not sidewalks could be added to the site plan. They have been added to the site plan, which was submitted to you. There's now a connection to the townhouse style development or that portion of the project all the way through the other sidewalks, so that there's a full connection to the clubhouse. The second was finding some additional parking for visitors. The original plan proposed 32 spaces on street. That doesn't include driveways or garages. That's been increased to 47 spaces total on street. Again, there's also two spaces per driveway that could be used, as well as some of the garages will have two-car garages or tandem garages. So I think the required amount under the zoning is 67. They're providing 47 on street, but also with the driveway parking, we would submit that that's more than adequate. Would also note that the county has said that this development is overparked. But that being said, we would request that the board issue a waiver for those 20 spaces. And then the third issue was the connector road. Both the county and your board had asked to explore whether or not the T-Berry Lane and Road A could be connected for emergency access. Toll Brothers and their team did meet with the fire district, as well as the building inspector, on January 26th. So unfortunately, that was the submission deadline. They have worked out a plan for an emergency road connector, as well as some turnarounds on the dead ends, although now there's a connector road. But that plan is not before you because we'll have to submit that the next time. That being said, I think those are the three outstanding issues. We would ask, if the board is so inclined, is to set a public hearing for March. I believe, I think that's as far as we can go procedurally because we're still waiting for any involved agency to get back to as to whether or not they would object to you serving as lead agency. I don't believe we will, but since you haven't heard from them, I think that's our only request tonight is if we can at least schedule the public hearing for March. By that point, you'll have the connector road plan and be able to also declare yourself lead agency, I assume.
All right, thanks for the update. John, do you want to give us an overview of your memo?
Sure. It really isn't any different than what you saw last time. They addressed the comments we had on their EAF adequately, and I believe the circulation process for lead agency began today. Is that correct?
Yes, it did.
Yep. And the only other comment that we added was related to the sidewalks that were added to the plan. We just asked them to provide the appropriate construction details for those. Otherwise, all the other comments remain. And, you know, a lot of them are constructibility-type comments. So I don't think there's anything that I would call a major concern here, especially considering that they have now met with the fire department, and it sounds like they do have a plan for connection road there. So I would be okay, you know, recommending that the board consider scheduling a public hearing.
Okay. Dominic, do you have any questions? And again, I think one thing that we asked you to check into was the applicability of the town's affordable housing provisions. I don't know if you had a chance to do that yet.
Yes, I did. I did research that, and I had reached out after the meeting to the building inspector, and he was helpful and provided dates for the Town Board's prior adoption of the mandatory affordable housing provisions. The law went into effect on April 18th, I believe, of 2007, and this project received approval six months prior to that, in October of 2006. And so as a result, this project was not required to comply with the mandatory affordable housing provisions. And so such would not apply to this proposal either.
Okay, thanks for that update. I think at the last meeting, we also authorized CPL to meet with the applicant's engineers to discuss things like water and sewer connections and capacity.
Yeah, I've had some brief discussions with them. They're still working out the details of their reports, as I understand it.
Do you want to give us any update on that?
We have also spoken with KIMO, and the initial indications are that there is adequate capacity in the systems, but obviously that will be worked through as we progress.
Right. Okay. Any questions from board members at this point?
No, I think they talked about the key items from the last meeting, which was the parking, the affordable housing, and the hammerhead, which we'll see addressed on the plans that are forthcoming. No.
Yeah, I think we also mentioned at the last meeting, we'll need all the lighting details, which need to be shown as downlight, full cutoff. And we'll...
No, not yet.
So I know we have the architectural drawings, but we'll need like all the building design details, colors, textures, materials. I think as long as we...
Yes, we'll be able to get to the next mission.
That...
I just didn't want to put my foot in my mouth too this late in the night. But yes, that would be in the next mission.
Okay, I was going to say, if we have those in time, if, assuming we do approve of scheduling a public hearing for the March meeting, I think having them submitted in time for that would be okay. But I'll go to the board members to ask about that. What do you think about setting, scheduling a public hearing on this matter for the March 10th Planning Board meeting?
Let's do it.
Yeah, let's go.
Looks like people are in agreement. Would someone like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on this? Bob moves it.
Second.
Suzanne seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we have Robbie abstaining, recusing. All right. So again, that'll be as soon after 7:00 PM as possible. I think now we have three hearings for next month. We also need signs. This is going to be a tough one to figure out where to put signs.
I was sitting back there trying to figure out where to suggest.
And how many?
Yeah.
10, 20?
Well, I can't pull up the site plan.
If they have that many, it's not 20.
Yeah. If you pull up the site plan, if you do Merritt Boulevard... Oh, I can? Oh, okay.
Um, here, wait. Let me close it out. Hold on a minute.
My thought, my two cents from sitting back there, was the Merritt Boulevard and then, I guess...
Route 55.
52.
52. There we go.
My feet are feeling it.
One end in there.
Can you see that?
In front of one of the...
Can you please...
Any ideas? I was thinking here.
Yeah, the entrance. And then one...
Yeah, the entrance, and then one on 52 and one on Merritt, like the other end of Merritt.
It's pretty, I believe that that end of Merritt is pretty far, far down, but.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, that's too far away from the site, it might be misleading almost, more than helpful.
Should be by the property, right?
Yeah, right near the entrance to Merritt.
So that's.
Merritt gets a lot of traffic anyway, so.
Oh, there he is.
That cold, even stiff.
Got nine, yeah.
It is pretty far away, but.
You've got 52 property, and then.
Well, otherwise, you wouldn't put one anywhere on the other end.
Do you think there should be one on Merritt on the other end?
I think those who would be most interested would be those traveling down Merritt. I would think the entrance to the community where it stands right now would be the appropriate place. I don't know if Merritt and 52.
Merritt and 52 is okay, but going the other way, I don't think so.
Yeah, the other way might be too far, but maybe in front, at the entrance to the property and at the corner of 52 and Merritt. Because that's the rest of the, where the rest of the development's going, so.
So are we talking about two signs?
Two signs, yeah.
All right, and Debbie will get you information on the public hearing, okay?
I will do that.
Okay. Any questions for us?
No.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a good night. Good seeing you.
Thank you. Well, I had thought that we might go into closed session to seek legal advice from counsel, but I think that will take longer than we have tonight, so maybe we could, we could see how it goes.
I don't, I mean, I mean, does that, does that discussion involve something that we would be talking about at the next meeting? And that's, so I think, I'm sorry, I know it's 11, I think it's an important discussion to have now, but, in my opinion, I think.
I have a question, are we going to keep the video off of here, or can I tell them to go?
I think the understanding would be that when we go into closed session, the video would go off.
Understood.
The only reason we would come back into session is to adjourn the meeting.
Well, why don't we just do that first, then, can't we?
Well, because we have a quorum.
We can't adjourn the meeting, because we, you know, but I don't think we need to be on video necessarily.
I just want to make one comment, I know that the town board does hold those type of sessions and lets Pete go, and then I just make note of the record when the meeting's been adjourned.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, I don't think we need to be on video to close, to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
That would be the proper procedure.
Okay.
Of course.
All right, would somebody like to make a motion to go into closed session to seek legal advice from our counsel? And I would ask that, so Dominic, Debbie, you stay, and John, if you would like to stay, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I'm just going to take a quick one minute.
Yeah, got it.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, John.
I mean, I'm the one who, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about having this discussion, but I'd be willing to make that motion to go into closed session.
Yeah, me too, some moved, I'm in second, I'll go for second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we are going into closed session?
Yep.
And we'll wait, yeah, we'll wait a minute to make sure that.
Do we set a time limit on the closed session?
Yeah, Dominic, what do you think, like 10 minutes maybe?
I'm happy to do it in 10 minutes.